Welcome, everybody. At this time, the board is coming out from closed session. Welcome to everybody to the Board of Education meeting for the Almonte Union High School District, Wednesday, February 1st. At this time, we're on the agenda, Item B, open session. And I open the session at, did I say a time? 6:04 PM. At this time, can we have Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent of Almonte Union High School District, give us a roll call, please?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Member Carlos Alcedo?
Present.
Member Celso Torres de Segres?
Present.
Member Qui Nguyen?
Present.
Member Lorenzo Briones?
Present.
And Member Ricardo Padilla?
Here.
Do it. Member Ruben Carrasco?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. At this time, I would like to ask Assistant Principal Ms. Jamie Witt, if you can please lead us in the flag salute. Assistant Principal at a Royal High School. You can come up.
Please rise for the flag salute. And here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you. At this time, before I go into the approval of the agenda, I would like to have a minute of silence for all the lives that were lost in Monterey Park. Monterey Park being a neighboring city to us here in the San Gabriel Valley. There are many people that lost their lives there, and it was a sad, it is a sad moment in the San Gabriel Valley. And it was a very sad day, particularly because it was the first day of the celebration of the lunar year for many cultures there in Monterey Park. It's a sad day that so many loved ones have to be going through what they're going through right now with the grief of loss of a loved one in a time that should be some of the most joyous time in their culture. So I'm going to ask for one minute of silence in respect of all the lives lost and all their families. And we just send our condolences as an Almonte Union High School District to the city of Monterey Park, to all its elected officials, to the leaders, but most importantly, to all the families that are experiencing this very sad time. A minute of silence, please. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we're going to go ahead and continue. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda with the following amendment. Move Item F1, Discussion and Direction on the Adult Transition Center to come immediately after Item B7, Communication from Union Representatives of EMUA and CSCE.
Yeah. I will make a subsequent motion to leave the agenda as is. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, let's call for the vote to leave the agenda as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the agenda will stay as it is.
You didn't call for no's?
Can I get a no?
No.
Okay, we got two. Three, two. The agenda stays. Can I get a, did we approve the agenda?
Yes.
We just did. It stays. Got it. Number two, consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting for January 4th, regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve.
We got a motion on the floor by Board Member Briones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay, second by Mr. Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Minutes are approved. Item number three, consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes for January 18, 2023, special meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move by Mr. Briones. Can I get a second? Seconded by Mr. Qui Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Number four, recognition of parent for their service on the SuperPAC, better known as the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee. Dr. Zuniga?
Yes, it would be my great pleasure to provide this opportunity to recognize one of our outstanding parents at Rosemead High School, Mrs. Anita Perez Ortega, who has been part of our SuperPAC. As President Padilla mentioned, the Superintendent's Advisory Council, which includes all parents from all schools. We usually meet about once every six weeks, and those opportunities for parents to, number one, receive updates by the superintendent and staff, as well as engage in parent needs. So any type of, they're like liaisons to their parents, but when they come to the meetings, they're really talking about the needs of the school site and some of the programming, or whether it's classes that the parents are taking are highlighted and also express whether things are working out or not. And I really appreciate that because it gathers, and it collects data from us about what parent needs are for Almonte Union High School District. As we all know, that as a high school district, we are somewhat challenged with parent engagement because kids look like adults now. And sometimes like, these kids are adults, they'll be okay at the high schools, when really, that's the opposite, we feel sometimes, where we feel that the more parent engagement, the better opportunities our students will have to not only succeed academically, but also become good citizens that would be able to go out into the real world and not only compete, but also make a living for themselves. So I value the time that we have. Mr. Cesar Assistant Superintendent also spearheads our SuperPAC along with our community liaison, or the district office, Irazema Nieblas. And they do a wonderful job in communicating with our parents, too. Unfortunately, with our outgoing parents sometimes, because their students graduate or there's life happens and there's things to take care of at home as well. So we completely understand, but we appreciate the time that Ms. Perez Ortega has been with us. So at this time, I'd like to acknowledge her and bring her up and present a certificate. I'll hand that over to our Board President and have her come up.
So this certificate, we'll stand over here, Anita. So this certificate of recognition is presented to Ms. Anita Perez Ortega for your service on the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee, better known as SuperPAC. For the 20, from 2020 to 2023, your dedication to our school community is truly admirable. Congratulations from the Almonte Union High School District, Board of Trustees, and it's signed by every single one of us. And we're also going to give you a special pin that Professor Torres de Segres has. So thank you for the dedication and everything you do. Not only that, but also for all the work that you've done with the after-school program, with Learn for so many years, you know, working at Rosemead High School, which is my alma mater. I've seen the, all the things you've done for our students through that program. But for you to also make time, you know, to come to the SuperPAC, aside from the other things that you do, is truly admirable. Thank you for helping our students in the district. There is no better service that you can provide than when you provide it to young people and touching the lives of young children, because they will be our future leaders. So thank you so much. And I'll allow my colleagues to say a few words, and then also our student trustee, and then we'll allow you to say some words as well, okay? All right. Let's move over here. We're all crunched up like there's no room. Sorry. Over here. There we go. You want to go first? There you go.
From the bottom of my heart, I really, you know, thank you and be grateful of your involvement with the school district. I was there once, and I remember. And the work you did perform is very outstanding and very critical to our children's education. And thank you again. Thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart.
Anita, you know that the first educators are the parents. Parents are the first educators. We can have wonderful teachers here, we can have wonderful administrators, and the job that you did helping, helping in this group to Dr. Zuniga is really very, very good and very appreciated. Parents are the first educators. And we do it with sincere, a lot of sincerity and love to our children. And if you do that, you have done, you have done this very well, and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much, Anita. We wish you the best in the rest of the time, okay? Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you so much for taking some time out of your busy day to be in this leadership position in the SuperPAC. Says a lot about the leader that you are. Just thank you for setting such a fine example for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, we always ask our parents to get involved, particularly when their students get to the high school level, because more often than not, the parents think the kids are older, they're okay to be off on their own, and this is really when they need you the most. So for you to continue to be involved is incredibly important, and I think it means a lot to all of us, as you've heard. But also, thank you for continuing your involvement even after your students have graduated from our schools, because it allows us to have that continuity and to share that institutional knowledge from you to others who come after you to make sure that our administration and our staff are hearing from our parents. So thank you. It's always such a pleasure to have our parents here, not only to recognize them, but to know that they continue to be involved in their communities and in the lives of not only their students, but many others. Congratulations. Well deserved tonight.
Well, congratulations, Felicidades. You know, I always like to think that, well, being a mother is always a full-time job, right? You know, it's full-time employment. And the fact that, you know, you still make time and show for our students, right, even after your son has graduated or daughter, it's remarkable. You know, from the bottom of my heart, this district is beyond happy to have you here. And, you know, there's no words that can really express our gratitude to have you and continue to make this growing contribution to our students in this community. So, lo gracias mucho y te queremos mucho.
So at this time, Anita, we're going to allow you to say a few words. If there's anybody here that you'd like to introduce from your family or anything that you'd like to say, the mic is yours.
Gracias. Buenas noches a todos. Disculpen, les voy a hablar en español. Es mi primera lengua. Sí, Manuel, inglés, un poquito. Thank you so much for being here today. Yo soy una madre de tres jóvenes adultos, ya graduados de la universidad. Como dijo aquí, mister Padilla trabajó también para un programa después de escuela. Como dijo aquí, mister Padilla, trabajo también para un programa después de escuela. Siempre es un placer para mí trabajar con los padres y con los estudiantes. Ser voluntaria, este país me lo enseñó, la verdad. Yo vengo de México, soy migrante, llegué aquí a los 30 años, y este país me enseñó cuánto valúan ustedes ser voluntarios. Y yo me hice voluntaria desde que mis hijos entraron a la primaria. Y desde allí aprendí a dar. Nunca espero recibir, pero les agradezco mucho lo que me dan. Gracias, gracias a todos.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Anita, okay? Gracias por todo. Another round of applause for Ms. Anita. We're going to take some pictures really quick. You direct us, what do you need? That was great. So we're on item B of the agenda, and we're on number four. We just did the recognition of the parent, of a parent from Anita from Rosemead High School. So thank you for that. That's always a very special thing for the Board of Education to recognize our parents and employees and, and to give thanks. I know I learned that from Professor Torres de Seigres that no matter what the dollar amount is or the time amount, we always give thanks. And I learned that from you, Professor Torres de Seigres. And you know that when you speak, I listen. So thank you, Anita. She left already? Gracias, mil gracias por todo lo que haces por nuestros estudiantes. Next, we're going to move to item five, School Site Instructional Report and Student Representative Update. We have a Royal High School here with us, Go Knights. But before we do that, I'd like to publicly apologize. I know that at the last board meeting, we tabled this item because we had a large number of public comments, and I didn't realize there was going to be that many. But I want to publicly apologize to our Arroyo High School students, the teachers, Ms. Witt, the principal, and our students. I know that at the last board meeting, there was a player, an athlete, that missed their game against Rosemead High School. And I know that that was a big thing because that's your rival at Arroyo. And I apologize for that. And I know that there were other students that needed to do some of their math homework. And so raise your hand, students, I'm apologizing to you, okay? I'm so sorry. I know you were super angry with me, and I would have been super angry with me, too. But I wanted the public to know that when, when I do something wrong, I apologize, okay? So with that, without further ado, I'll introduce our principal, Mr. Gabriel Flores.
You can clap, yeah. Well, I heard a fourth of a clap, so. Is it on?
I apologize. I know.
All right. Okay, good evening, President Padilla, members of the board, district administration, and everybody here this evening, as well as those of you that are home watching us from your YouTube videos or the presentation. My name is Gabriel Flores, and I am the proud principal of Arroyo High School. I'd like to start off by, first of all, thanking you, the board. Thanking you, Mr. Padilla, for making this change so that our students do have that opportunity to present early on so that we can get them home. So thank you for that. I want to also start off by having you take a look at the presentation, and you'll see that we do have the bulletin board. And that bulletin board is right outside the district office right here, actually by the elevator. So if you have not had a chance, please take a look at it. That was put together by Mr. Dara Sem, who is right behind me. He's our Director of Student Affairs. I think it'll be up for a few more days before the next school comes and takes it over, but I did want to give that recognition that was rightfully deserved. In addition to that, I do want to go ahead and begin our presentation here. We're moving here. There we go. Okay, so we are, we were asked to come up and present to you some information regarding what's taking place with our students at Arroyo High School and what connections are being made between our students with each other and with the community. And we do have some of our students here this evening to present. You mentioned basketball. While we did have Star Relas, who was our ASB president, she did the flag salute yesterday for the groundbreaking ceremony. She does have a game right now, so she, she couldn't make it. She said, "I'm not missing today." So, and I don't blame her, I think we all agree with that. I think this may be her last game, so I'm glad that she's out there playing, and we wish her the best of luck, and hopefully we, we won. But we do have other students here this evening. We do have student Devin Relas, Aliya Alameo, and Hannah Martinez that will present. And we will start with Devin. Devin, come on up, sir.
My name is Devin Relas, and I'm the ASB Vice President. And again, I want to thank you guys for your time. And I was here last time as well. And again, I know it wasn't your guys' fault for it. So I thank you guys again for the apology and moving us up forward. So now I want to introduce, before we start our presentation, I want to introduce my other speakers here, and...
Hello, my name is Aliya Alameo, and I'm Corresponding Secretary.
Hello, my name is Hannah Martinez, and I'm Commissioner of Tech ASB. And my name is Hannah Martinez. So this, I'm going to talk about our Arroyo Instagram page. In the last 90 days, we have reached over 6,000 accounts and gained over 300 more followers. On our Instagram account, we promote Spirit Weeks, club events, and news to the student body. We also have a athletics Instagram account, and we have highlights and promote our athletes as well. We also have a TikTok account, and we have 910 followers, and we have over 40,000 likes. Our Commissioners of Records are the ones who run this account, and we do recaps on Spirit Days, Junior Nights, and Back to School Nights, and more. Now I'm going to pass it on to Devin, who's doing School Communications.
Outside of our social media communication, we have in-person communication. An example of this would be our Club Knights Court, which is a meeting, which we hold meetings once a month, and we talk about our past events, and we also talk about future events, and we act on what we want to see improved or what we want to see for upcoming events. And with it, we have many groups, and each of them are a variety of different people all with their own different opinions, and we all share our ideas so we can improve on what we want to see. And it's more school-involved as well. And then next up, I want to talk about ICC and Club Rush. ICC is our inner, inner club council, and we have all our presidents from all our different clubs here, 30, 30 and more. And in it, we talk about past and future events. We also talk about how we can publicize them and how we can get our regular student body to participate more in clubs and extracurriculars. And it seems like it's been working so far. And in Club Rush, our big thing is where we promote it throughout the whole week, where students can do it online and in person. Now I want to move on to our Spirit Weeks, which is a way we involve our community into having fun and spreading our school's community spirit. It's, we have a Spirit Week every first and last week of the month. And yet, our famous Spirit Days this year, we had it. We're bringing anything but a backpack, we're kitty backpacks, and country versus country club, just to name a few. And now I'm going to move on to some of our major school-wide events that we hold this year.
Our annual back assembly is the BBW Assembly, and the purpose is to boost school spirit. And we have games and performances. Some of the games we play are watermelon eating contests, just to name a few. And our performances are from cheer, band, and choir. We also have face painting booths that happen in the morning, and a BBW promo video that goes out the day before to get everyone excited.
So now I'll be talking about our homecoming dance. So this past year, it was October 28th where we had our homecoming game and our dance. We sold over 900-plus tickets. Our theme was A Night Under the Stars, or Under the Lanterns. And our homecoming court was playing lunch rally activities to get everyone excited. And we also had a homecoming Spirit Week. We also have a great athletics program. We have Senior Nights, which ASB sets up posters and sets up balloon columns and streamers to make their night special. We are currently Mission Valley League Champions for varsity, girls varsity tennis, varsity football, boys and girls cross-country so far. We also have sports rallies to hype up our varsity teams for their upcoming games. And the student body can gain information on dates and times through our Arroyo Athletics Instagram page. Now passing it back to Devin.
I want to thank you guys again for your time. And before I pass it back to Mr. Flores, we bought some gifts for you guys, so.
Great job, ASB. Thank you once again, ASB. Those shirts that you got, the gift from us, those were given out at our semifinals football game, and it was just part of the rah-rah. We had a blackout that night, so we hope you enjoy the shirts and wear them with pride. I know that we're not all from Arroyo High School, but they're nice-looking shirts, so please wear them. Hey, you gave me a double X, Mr. Flores, what's up with that? You know what? I didn't give it to you, it was random. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on with our report, and I'm going backwards, here we go. Our instructional report today. So our students gave their report, and now it's time for us to share a little bit about what's taking place at Arroyo High School. And here this evening to present information is obviously myself. As principal, we do have Ms. Witt, who is our Assistant Principal that oversees curriculum and instruction. We don't have Ms. Kathy Flores here, but she does have a video that we will share as course lead in what we're doing to address some of the areas of growth in our math department, some changes that we've made, as well as we do have Mr. Quiche Aurora, who is right behind me, he is our instructional coach, and he will present what we're doing with PD at Arroyo High School. And then we have Alfredo Salazar, who is our EL Tosa. He could not be here this evening, but he has a short video, and that's with quotations, it's not too short. But we do have a video to present to you to share what's taking place, specifically with how we're addressing our English learner population and how we're trying to bridge that gap to get them the support that they need. So for today's presentation, our focus is, we do have our school-wide action plan goals. We have four goals, but for the sake of today's presentation, we are focusing on Goals One and Two, Improve Literacy Proficiency as well as Student Engagement. We do have our WASP visit that's taking place this coming March. It's March 19th, that's Sunday. So, Board, I know that our district administration is aware of it, but we will, we'd love to have you out there to, to visit our WASP visiting team as well. We will focus, like I said today, on Improve Literacy and Student Engagement. And like anything else that we do, we start off with looking at data. And for the sake of Goal Number One, our focus was on using our Sback data. So we did rely on Sback data. And if you look up on the screen, you'll see that we looked at the data from 2000... Thank you, sir, I like that, defend the castle. Our, our data is from 2019 as well as 2022. You see that there's a gap there with the Sback results because during that time, we did have COVID. So we weren't utilizing that data because we weren't taking the test at that point. For Student Engagement, the data that we focused on was the Youth Truth Survey that we gave out, as well as our Panorama Survey. Those are given out annually. Those, those students, those are surveys that are given out to our students as well as our staff, but we really do value what our students have to say, and we use that to drive what's taking place at Arroyo High School. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Witt, and Ms. Witt will share how we've, how we've tied in MTSS and how our focus on Tier One and Tier Two students is taking place. Sure, I've viewed quite a bit of data that we've used. And then we'll shift gears to Quiche, that will focus more on what's taking place with our PD. And then we'll finish off with how we address student engagement. So with that, Ms. Witt, you ready?
Well, thank you for having us back this evening, everyone, and for moving us up so that we can have this opportunity. I appreciate that immensely. My focus tonight is really to explain to you our work through the lens of MTSS, being a multi-tiered system of support for students. Our focus is really going to be what we consider to be our Tier One Instruction, which is our educational strategies for all students. You'll also hear information from Mr. Salazar regarding what we're doing to support our EL population, which is a Tier Two support for a smaller group of students, the instructional strategies, as well as the community activities that we, we use with that population of students in order to support them. All of our work that we're discussing tonight is done really by looking at it as a cycle. So you'll notice here, like, we start off with, with an evaluation of data. And as Mr. Flores alluded to, whether that be Sback data, whether that be our student performance data and their current classes, we're taking a look at how our students are doing so we can then define what our needs are. What are our problems, where are our gaps, and what is it that we need to address? We then bring together our stakeholders, be it our teachers, our students, and gather input so that we can really analyze the problem and determine what our best course of action would be, implement that course of action, and then return to an evaluation of that data as we move forward. So the data that I'd like to specifically hone in on with you is our Sback data, both in the areas of mathematics as well as English Language Arts. When you take a look at the, the area there in green, what I want to, to point out, we have a large number of our students who are nearly meeting standard. And that's, that number there, I'm really familiar with. I know because I think about my son, and I go, "Son, you're right there. What more could we do?" Right? Is it a matter of like, do we need to do more homework? Do we need to get tutoring? What is it that we need to focus in on? And I've asked teachers, what are the skills that he needs to have? So this really becomes our area of focus for all our students, which is why, again, I point to this as a Tier One intervention. We start looking at what is our curriculum, what are our instructional methods? And so, if you look here in the box, we're really focused as a school on literacy across the curriculum, whether that be mathematical literacy or whether that be, you know, in English or a social science, science class, whatever the case may be. But in the area of math, we're also looking at what our math practices are because we realize that post-COVID and digital learning, our kids have large instructional gaps that we need to try to fill. So again, we're using this data to try to drive our decision-making as we go forward. And the focus is really to have student-centered, inquiry-based learning that's happening in our classes with a focus on scaffolding that learning so that it's accessible to all students. We're also honing in on strategic support within our classrooms by having our college tutors focused in our mathematics classes, primarily in our IM One classes. And then, what I have presented in the past to many of you, and Mr. Nguyen, I'd love to explain it more to you, is our Shields Up program. And Shields Up is our integrated program throughout, within the course of the school day, that allows us to provide specified tutoring to students in particular subject areas, as well as having students in study halls which afford them opportunities to go visit teachers to get additional help, as well as time to do their homework. As we move forward. Now, specifically in the area of math, we've had kind of a shift of focus. So in the past, we've been looking at this area of literacy and math, and we were looking at a school-wide strategy known as CER that had been presented back a few years ago. Well, we're now taking a look really more so at redefining what our curriculum looks like. Again, we understand that our students are missing some fundamental and foundational information that, that kind of fell through the holes during their junior high experience. So through our partnership with, with UCI, which you have graciously supported, our, our mathematics department is working on professional development days as well as release time to take a look at the Integrated Math One as well as the Integrated Math Two curriculum. And I can tell you that this curriculum is much more hands-on. It's very, it's very visual. It's learning math in a different way. And again, I mentioned my own son a little while ago, who struggled with math. He said, "This is the first time he actually feels like he can do it" as a student in the IM One class. And so I would like, if we could, to have Ms. Flores, our math course lead in the area of Math One and Two, explain a little bit about one of her, again, hands-on collaborative projects that she did in her math class.
Hi, my name is Kathy Flores, and in my Integrated Math Two class at Arroyo High School, we studied a unit on volume. And rather than giving them a traditional test on volume, I had them create a castle, a real list, a realistic live castle. So the goal of the project was for them to, number one, they had to work together in a team of three or four. They had to build a castle on a program called TinkerCad. And once they had their castle built... And once they had their castle built, they had to construct it with raw materials. Once their construction was done, they were able to find the volume of what they created. And then in a conclusion, they created a PowerPoint presentation to explain to the class, present to me and their classmates, on how to find the volume of their castle. They also talked about the difficulties of the project. They self-reflected on what they did well and what they needed to improve on. So it was a fun way to assess volume without a traditional exam.
And I'd like to thank Kathy Flores. I know some of you have been in her classroom and have been able to see the work that she's doing. She's a fantastic math teacher at a Royal, and we're very, very lucky to have her. So with that, I'd like to pass the microphone over to Mr. Aurora, our instructional coach, to talk a little bit more about our cycles of inquiry at a Royal.
Okay, so hi, my name's Kiche Aurora. I'm the instructional coach at a Royal High School. Thank you for having me tonight. So I want to talk about our instructional vision. We talked a lot about literacy and how that's become the focus as a tier one instructional strategy for all of our teachers. So in order to do that, this year, we have some action steps where we have really course-like teams focusing on a common lesson, common assessment. And of course, they can't do that lock and step every day, but we have these big pictures. And we've broken it down into three cycles, where we really want them to focus on an area of literacy that they find is cross-tricklier and valid to their instructional practices. And also after the assessment, they're going to meet together as a team, and they are going to figure out how to remediate that process, if that process was successful. And we're doing that through the lens of data, data, data. And this is why we're having common assessments, common lessons, right? So let's move on. Now, before I get into how that looked, I want to show you what that looks like on a calendar, and I'm pressing the wrong button, so, okay. So we really did utilize those professional development days that were added this year. So we had our first PD day on October 3rd. We were able to have course-like teams really meet together and make a lesson plan. And the first one focused on, you heard Ms. Witt talk about earlier, CER, Claim Evidence and Reasoning, as a literacy strategy across the board. And everyone engaged in that. We had a, we used a late start date as a calibration day to make sure that if they were using a rubric, everyone was being assessed in a similar way. And we used that November 7th PD day to analyze, look at data, make sure that everyone... So there was that accountability piece where everyone was now responsible for sharing their data with the rest of their team. And at that time, they were able to plan remediation and move on. This, and we just literally finished one of the, or the first part of the cycle. So right here on January 17th through the 26th, I know it says 27th on there, we had release time for all course-like teams, where they were, again, able to have a half-day release day, create, look at some data, and make some instructional decisions that they would all engage in as a group. Because teachers often work in silos a lot of times, so this forces them to really look as a group with each other. Then we're going to use that March 6th PD day to look at data and make some decisions based off the findings that we have. Once again, we're focused on literacy. So we had the seven domains and we kind of just blanket statement. But in that lens of looking at the data that we can use and focus, we wanted to focus on, narrow the focus down to Sback-measured literacy. So reading, writing, speaking, listening, research and inquiry. And so you have, you all have this consumable, but this is what I used during my professional development with my students, I'm sorry, with the other teachers at a Royal High School. Not my students, they'll get mad at me. We looked at our instructional strategies for, to look at reading, writing, listening, speaking, research. And on the backside of that, you'll see all the data from the past several years that we have for Sback. We broke, we broke this down into parts. How much percentage of Claim One is narrative literacy, how much of it is informational text? Same with Claim Two, Claim Three, and Claim Four. We really want to break it down so that we would have a deeper understanding of what this looks like for our students and make instructional decisions based off that, based off need, obviously using the data in conjunction with that. Now, this is just a cool, ignore the slide, my kids are very young. But on this slide includes Sback sample, links to Sback sample questions. And that's really was the most revealing part of our work with the teachers is that they were actually able to see Sback sample questions, the style of questioning it was. And we used a tool called Formative to try and reflect those types of questions so that the first time that the kids, that when the kids take the Sback, they will have had practice with something that feels very similar to that. And so we try to utilize the time that you gave us, and we hope that we have one more cycle. Well, we'll continue this work. And I don't know how to end this, so I'm just going to say that's all I have.
So yeah, so thank you, thank you, Mr. Aurora. So yeah, we're hopeful that with the information that we shared, that these cycles that we have in place right now will help kind of close that gap between those that nearly met to those that meet and exceed on the Sback this coming, this coming April, when we take the exam as juniors. So that was our area and what we did to focus on specifically on goal number one. But with student engagement, again, like I said earlier, Mr. Alfredo Salazar, EL Tosa could not be here today. He did provide a video, and you know that as educators, we love to talk. So he was tasked to create a short video, but I think he just, he couldn't help himself. So it is kind of long, but it's very, very good information. I promise you that, okay? So it will keep you entertained, but it's really, really good information about what's taking place at a Royal High School. So with that, I will go ahead and press play and hand it over to him.
My name is Alfredo Salazar. I'm the EL Tosa at a Royal High School. I'm going to talk a little bit about our EL population and what we're doing at a Royal to improve how we better support them. So this is our English learner population currently at a Royal. As you can see, English learners make up almost 15% of our population. That percentage is higher than previous years. The main reason for that is our freshman population was particularly large this year. And this is due to the fact that our feeder schools reclassified fewer students than usual the last couple of years due to the pandemic. Most schools had issues with absenteeism or struggled to complete LPA testing at 100% in a distance learning environment. Additionally, you can see that within our EL population, approximately 30% are newcomers and 70% are long-term English learners. Today, I'm going to talk about what our focus has been this year and how we support our English learners. By the way, this is a picture of our reclassification celebration. Last year, we had a great event with students, their parents, and some teachers as staff members present. You can't see most of their faces, but I can assure you they're smiling behind those masks. Our focus this year has been two-pronged. As an EL Tosa, I have the opportunity, now the privilege of working with both staff and students. I'm going to talk about both. I'm thinking of this year or the last few years as the time to shift paradigms, to shift our sometimes antiquated ideas about supporting our English learners. It's a difficult climb, but I'm very optimistic that our staff will come through for these kids. Let's start with what we've done with our staff. We started the school year with a professional development session focused on English learner support. At this session, I provided the staff with information, data about our English learners, who they are, how to find their language classification, et cetera. I explained all the different language classifications and ELD proficiency levels, all of this to make sure that as we move forward with PD and support for this population of students, we make sure that we're all speaking the same language, pun intended. But the main focus of the PD session was the EO roadmap, and particularly Principal Number One. I wanted to make sure to convey the idea of shared responsibility. All of us are responsible for the success of our English learners, not just the EOV teachers or the EL Tosa. As I said, our main focus at this back-to-school PD session was Principal Number One from the roadmap, which I like to think as the why or the mindset principle. Whereas Principal Number Two talks about curriculum. Number Three and Number Four talk more about systems and articulation within and across systems. Principal Number One focuses on the individual person, the individual student, how we can support that one individual person, right? Here's just a refresher. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. But here's a text of the summary of Principal Number One in the EO roadmap. I've highlighted some phrases or terms that stand out to me, things like respond to diversity, there is no one size fits all, cultures and languages are valued as assets, students see themselves reflected in the curriculum, classrooms and school campuses are safe, caring, inclusive, and affirming climates, student voice is an essential strategy, and so many more. At this session, at the beginning of the school year, we did a deep dive into Principal Number One. We did a self-evaluation for our classrooms in our school to see if we're meeting some of the indicators in Principal Number One. I gave our teachers some simple recommendations, and I feel like it was a very successful session. I have a pretty great relationship with most of our staff at a Royal, but there are always some teachers who reach out more than others. After this session, I'm happy to say that some teachers who don't usually reach out for support reached out and have been reaching out in order to better help their students. Towards the end of fall semester, I continued our EL conversation with our Knights leadership team. We talked about designated ELD versus integrated ELD. We talked about the ELD standards, and we began to work on how to integrate the ELD standards into our already in-progress PD plan. We talked about Principal Number Two as well, and this is some of the ideas that are Principal Number Two, that it was just a quick introduction to our KLT, our Knight leadership team on Principal Number Two. Our focus moving forward, something that we talked about at that meeting, will be to do a deep examination of Principal Number Two, like I said, in order to improve our intellectual quality of instruction. But before that, we want to continue analyzing Principal One, making sure all of our staff is on board with this paradigm shift, that all of our staff understands the why before we do a deep dive into the how. As I said, this is a two-pronged approach. In continuing with the idea behind Principal Number One, we've decided that one of the most important objectives we can have is to build community for our students. So based on that idea, one of the things we've done this year is to revamp our work area. To rename it, we've renamed it the Language Center. I work very close with our categorical programs assistant, our language assessment assistant, our community liaison. But our workspace needs a shift as well, from a staff-centered office environment to a student-centered, warm, welcoming environment. We hosted an open house for all English learners early in the school year, where we handed out goodies like candy apples and popcorn, and some goodies like school supplies. We also hosted a holiday celebration for our newcomers. For that one, we invited our ELD teachers and some of our staff, like the CSSC instructional coach and administrators, to spend some time playing games with our students and eating some delicious food. I believe it was a very successful experience. We had a lot of fun. And you can see some of the pictures there of our students having fun, or our staff members having fun, hanging out with our students. But perhaps what I'm most proud of is my Shields Up class. At a Royal, because of our Shields Up schedule, we have the opportunity to provide targeted support to the students that most need it. One of the first things I did when I became Tosa was to request a Shields Up class, where I would have all of our newcomer students. This way, I could be available to them daily for whatever support they may need, academic or otherwise. Students graduate from my class at the end of the first year or at the end of first semester if they earn long lunch. I believe that it's due to this class that I have a constant stream of students coming to our center. Sometimes their questions have to do with academics, like asking or submitting transcripts, checking their progress towards graduation, or qualifying for the AB21/21 grad exemption, et cetera. But many times, they just need guidance on other things, like getting a bus pass or a work permit, or trying out for a sport, or submitting a parent note. They need some kind of social emotional support, or simply just a place where they can feel safe and comfortable, right? All of this is with, again, Principal Number One in mind, right? I'll preach the gospel of Principal Number One, about being intentional in our community building, about having an inclusive, affirming, and welcoming environment, about having a climate that supports bilingualism, about giving students, making sure that students have a voice, you know, student voice and ownership, giving them emotional support, all of these things that are necessary for our students to be successful, right? If we want our students to be successful here, they need to feel like they're part of the culture of the school, right? They need to be part of the culture of the school. And a lot of the times, that hasn't happened, where as an English learner myself, I know from you sometimes are not seen, are not part of the clubs, are not part of the sports, are not part of the dances, activities, things like that. So that's the push that we're trying to do, again, following Principal Number One, that we have to be inclusive, we have to be affirming, we have to stop thinking in terms of deficits, right? What do the students need? But instead of what can the students provide, what do they have to bring to the table? So once again, that's my presentation. Thank you very much for listening to me. Again, my name is Alfredo Salazar. I'm the EL Tosa at a Royal. Any questions you might have, I'm available. Call me at 3868. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. As mentioned, it was long, but it was well worth listening to. It's some great things that are taking place at a Royal High School. So that does conclude our instructional report. We hope that based on the information that we provided, you see what's taking place at a Royal High School, the efforts that are being made by our students, by our staff, by our administration. There's work to be done. By no means are we where we need to be right now, but hopefully we can close that gap with the work that's being put in place right now. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Before you guys leave, I want to ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions, but your presentations, very much appreciated. I'll go ahead and start off with Board Member, Mr. Breones. Do you have any questions or comments?
Just thank you, sorry, thank you to a Royal High School, to the administration, to the Tosas, and to the students for being here tonight, presenting to us. I don't have any questions. I do appreciate that they're on us of the report. As long as it may have been, I appreciate hearing it because we need to know and understand what's going on on the campuses, and more importantly, how we can better support you. So thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you, Board Member Breones. Board Member Carlos Alcido?
Yeah, thank you guys so much. For everybody that was here, people that weren't here, Ms. Flores and Mr. Salazar, especially for our students who spoke so eloquently about everything that's going on in their life, the student life at a Royal. But yeah, you know, even though it was probably more than the three to five minutes that you expected, I was glad that he was able to express his expertise and to show what the work, the good work that's going on to improve the success of our EL students. So thank him very much for us.
May I comment very quickly? Last time when we were going to present, he had three slides. So I think he's probably watching now, so I figured he, he figured he had some time, and he said, I'm going to take advantage of it, so.
Right on.
But it's, like I said, it was all for good reasons.
See what happens when you table items? It gets better, right?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Padilla, yes.
Is that all Board Member Alcido?
Thank you.
All right, Board Member Queen Nguyen?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a lot of great thing going on at a Royal, you know, a lot of clubs and everything? But I haven't, do you have any like academic club, like debate? Or, you know, like sign of blam piad or the Catholic or so-and-so?
We have both. We have speech and debate and academic decathlon. Our speech and debate club is, it's a big club that we have led by Mr. Terry Colvin. We actually host quite a bit of events on our site. I think last year, we had about four of them that took place on our site. So very active with speech and debate at a Royal High School.
Yeah, another question I want to have for you, you know, for both of you.
Yes.
You know, like, for me, the IM1 is very important. That's the foundation of our student to climb up the ladder and be successful.
Sure.
And, you know, the data doesn't reflect, you know, what it is. So, you know, have you ever worked closely with the feeder school, like MRCD school? Worked closely with them, provide support so we can prep a student coming into high school so we can make our life easier, spend some resource, you know?
Yes, we have. There's more work to be done there, Mr. Nguyen, no doubt about that. One of the things that we're really looking at is our summer school classes. And what we're trying to do now is identify the gaps that we have between their eighth grade year and their freshman year, and the goal is to take advantage of that.
and their freshman year, and the goal is to take advantage of the math readiness courses that we have during the summertime, and focus on those strategies, so that when they make their transition from the eighth grade to the ninth grade, they become more successful in IM one.
How many feeder school you have from Arroyo?
Gosh, we have, I don't know exactly, is it five?
Five feeder school.
Yes.
And, you know, they have different standards.
Absolutely.
And that, that's a big gap, that's why, you know, when they reach to high school, we having problem, and, you know, I think we should dedicate, from my observation, because the last time I went to Rosewood High School, I went to IM one class, predominantly Latino, and that doesn't look good. I want to change the vision, change the perception, you know, if we prepare the kid well enough, they will be successful, no matter what color the skin they are, and, you know, we need to work it harder, that's my personal opinion.
Sure. Thank you, sir, I agree.
Yeah, and besides, we have to look at our system, which is a royal, you know, structure also, you know, I'm engineer, I'm an ex-engineer, so I look at the system as a whole, you have an input, you have a system, so we look our system closely, is there any buy-in to what you try to do, or it's just, you know, whatever it is, we have to look at both ways, from the input point of view, and from the system point of view, and we can monitor the result, how it come out.
Absolutely, and I agree with you 100%, we are working with UCI, and we will look at the data, and if we feel that the benefits are, we're seeing the benefits of working with an organization like UCI, then we'll continue with them, if we don't, then we'll continue to make changes until we find what we need to support our kids.
You don't mind having another question?
Sure, sir.
You have so many questions, you know, when it comes to education. Besides aspect, a smart balance, you have any metric, like some assessment it used to have, you know, for your school, or for your classes?
In the area of mathematics?
Yeah, mathematics, and also ELA.
I'm loud, but, so, yeah, actually, our math, our math department, through that Math One curriculum, as well as that Math Two curriculum, they are specifically working on curriculum that matches, and assessments that are all in line with one another, so that they can consistently look at that data. What we are working towards is doing a better job of what that looks like when we're, you know, cycling and re-spiraling that information down, so that the kids can achieve the pieces that we're missing as they were moving forward. So for example, if it's, if it's unit two, and we're finding that kids aren't meeting a particular standard, well, what does that look like as we move forward into unit three? How are we, how are we going back to reteach that skill? So they are actually working quite well together to create those assessments, but again, there's more work to be done, and I think that they are definitely dedicating their time to doing that work now, based upon the student performance data that you're, that you're mentioning.
Yeah, I talk some of the IM one teacher, not because they don't know how to teach, sometimes they don't, they cannot teach, because, you know, the kid is not ready to learn, so they have to come up with something.
Yeah.
To lower the standard, to meet the student level.
And there's a lot of conversation and work around that right now.
To our student, and, you know, when they go, when they go to IM two, they lost, they totally lost.
Right.
And that's why they've been dropping out like, you know, like crazy.
That's why we have to really focus a lot of effort on that foundation.
I've been working, I have a lot of mentee from Arroyo, and from Almonte High School also, so that's why, you know, I try to, you know, to point it out to the board, and to the education, we need to do better job.
And we will do it.
Make sure they become successful, to go to college or career ready.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, very good questions, and I know that is your expertise, mathematics, so I appreciate your feedback. Professor Torres de Seigrest.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, and the first part that I want to say is to the, our wonderful students, thank you very much, the students, because you have one important thing that all the students need to have, enthusiasm. Enthusiasm is the characteristic of the teenagers, but also, some students are not as enthusiastic, you have to try, please, to try to inject to the rest of your friends, and the rest of the group and the school, enthusiasm, that enthusiasm that you show here, try to do it with all of them, and you are going to see that Arroyo High School is going to keep it up being one of the best high schools. Enthusiasm is very important, and I really admire you and respect you, and I hope that you can keep on doing this with a great job. And about our, our students, the studies that you have been doing about our curriculum, I love this curriculum, it's so nice and so good, but not everybody, I know that not all the students absorb or take this. Ms. Quinn, how do you do with the students that they need mentoring? Do you select the students that they need mentoring? Do they come to talk to you, or do you notice, and I know you are always, I've been observing you, how well you work with all the students, and how much you love your career, how much you pay attention to the students, but there are some students that they need mentoring, and they are very shy, and they don't do it.
It's really, I mean, it's a multifaceted response. Obviously, we have, we have after-school tutoring that takes place, both in our library, as well as within classrooms, by our math teachers, who are consistently reaching out to their own students, to, you know, come see me in the library on Tuesday, and like, get that extra support from me, so kind of that individual approach that's happening in the classroom. Through the Shields Up program, there's also an opportunity for our teachers to select students, to basically handpick them into their tutoring programs. So since a student is eligible for Shields Up, obviously, they can't go out to long lunch, the idea is to give that student an additional 24 minutes a day, Monday through Thursday, with their teacher, so that they can get specified support in their, in their classes as well. Another thing that I've been focused on with our college tutors in working with our math teachers.
Oh, that's good.
Is specifically, rather than, I mean, as a teacher, always, you know, you can put an extra body in the room, but if we don't have a system in place, if we don't have a structure upon which to work and really address the needs of the kids, having another body there is just, really just another set of eyes. So what I've been talking to the teachers about, and this has something that I know our teachers are now beginning to implement in this last two grading periods, is selecting a group of their own students that they specifically provide data to the college tutors about, so that those college tutors can then work with those students in class, whether that be pulling them to the side for additional support, or really just sometimes doing that personal mentoring, which looks like, when you're all familiar with Synergy and what we're doing there, I mean, it's literally an application on the kid's phone, where I can sit down with you, and I can say, pull it up, let's take a look at your math grades.
Yeah, that's very important.
What's happening, why did you miss that quiz, what's going on with that homework assignment, and then you can get that one-to-one, that kind of addresses that idea of, you know, kids not being comfortable in showing up to a random tutor, but we're really trying to focus that on, on a personal level. So I hope that addressed your question.
Yes, that's the thing that the students need. Another important thing is in the program of reading, writing, listening. Well, one thing is listening, and the other thing is hearing.
It's true.
And unfortunately, with our teenagers, they listen for two or three seconds, no, two or three minutes, and later on, is hearing. And the thing that I really like is that you are pushing them, this is the part that I like from you, demonstrating effective communication of the skills, that's the way that then, you know that they are, that they listen, not only hear, they listen, they have to have that, demonstrating the effects of the communication, and I think that's the secret for the success of our students.
As a teacher, I used to always tell my kids, you know, if you can't explain it to me, then you don't know it yet.
Exactly.
So I absolutely agree with you with regard to communication.
And the last one about the culture, the culture of the high school, that is really a very important point, because if everybody's together, doesn't matter that they come from different cultures, you have the cultures of Arroyo High School, you have to create that, and I think that with these programs, and with the students in the ASB, the culture of Arroyo High School is going to be great, and we keep working together very well. Thank you very much for the great job, I'm really very happy with you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Professor Torres de Seigrest, and yes, to your entire staff, Principal Gabriel Flores, thank you so much, Ms. Witt, we go way back, and I know that you're an amazing administrator, also to the teacher on special assignment, and to all the students, to Devon, Leah, and Hannah, I appreciate you guys coming up here, it's hard to go before the Board of Education, but you guys did an outstanding job. Lastly, being an English language learner, I know you said that that video was long, but the gentleman articulated his craft very clearly, and there's things in there that I listen to as an English language learner, myself, I know several of us up here are English language learners, sometimes I wonder if I was ever reclassified, I think I'm an ALTEL, Long-Term English Language Learner, but my point is that, you know, teaching, all teachers are ELD teachers, and that's powerful for me to hear that from you, the administration, because some teachers will say, well, I'm not the ELD teacher, you are the ELD teacher, because you have to scaffold, and you have to do the integrated ELD into those classrooms, and I'm glad that you explained the difference between designated ELD, where you put all the ducks of the same level, level one, level two, level three, for ELD, versus the integrated, because if I'm a kid that just came from Mexico and I'm 17, like, that designated and the integrated, I'm going to need both of them, so tell the teacher back at the site, Salazar, that I did appreciate that video, so thank you so much, and Arroyo, you know, you do everything that starts with A's, A for Arroyo, you're awesome, you're, the arts are awesome at your school, the academics are awesome at your school, the athletics are awesome at your school, so go Knights, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Padilla, also.
You know what, Dr. Zuniga, you're going to have to remind me, because I'm always forgetting, our student trustee, you got to give me a cue, I apologize, I always do that, I'm so sorry. Mr. Ruben Carrasco.
No worries, thank you, just really quickly, well, thank you for the presentation, it's quickly highlighting something, you know, I like to think, or, you know, math is pretty hard, it's tough, man, but seeing how you guys had the volume castle project, it's always fun and exciting to see new ways of approaching difficult subjects, and, you know, props to you guys, and overall, props for everything, and just highlighting kind of, in the beginning of the presentation, kind of the student segment, if our three students can, over four students can stand up, Devon, and Leah, Hannah, and there's a fourth one, if you can just please introduce yourself.
Hold on, we want to know, did you win?
Yeah.
There you go.
Good. Awesome, so, you know, one thing that, it's true, is that if we want our districts, if one of our high schools in our district to be better, right, a lot more is demanded from our students, whether that be athletics, whether that be academics, or whether that be clubs, you know, a lot more is going to be asked of our students, and for example, if you want our teams to compete at the highest athletic level, our athletes are going to have to put in more work, if we want our, for our high schools to put forth better score results, our students are going to have to study harder, right? And at the end of the day, nothing really can express our gratitude for our students and all the hard work that they are putting forth, and especially these four who came, all four have done great things for the school in their respective ways, so just quickly, you know, giving props to all of your students, and, you know, and I will highlight these four as well, and if you can just get one more round of applause for them, please. Congratulations, Arroyo, and I look forward to seeing more from you.
Thank you, Board Member Ruben Carrasco, and again, I apologize, Dr. Zuniga, you need to come and tap me and say we need Mr. Carrasco, I apologize, okay, I'm not doing it intentionally, so please stop me, all right, I apologize again.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Principal Flores, at this time, we're going to move on to item B, and we're on number six, public comments, at this time, I would like to call up Mr. Jake Fisher from Almonte Police Department, welcome.
President Padilla, Almonte Union High School, District Board Members, Dr. Zuniga and staff, thank you so much for this opportunity to talk to you today, to introduce myself to you. My name is Jake Fisher, as President Padilla just stated, I am the new Almonte Police Chief, so I thought it was imperative, although I know, I think, most of you, for me to formally come and talk to you today. I represent approximately 180 men and women of the Almonte Police Department, both in a sworn capacity and various support staff civilian capacities. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, that my roots here in Almonte actually date back quite some time, that my family heritage first came in the 1930s during the Dust Bowl era, and migrated to California, my great uncles, including my grandmother, and the first place they landed was right here in Almonte, California, working in the agricultural fields. My father was first hired by the Almonte Police Department in 1973, and served for the Almonte Police Department for 34 years, and I have been here also for now 23 years. So I have a deep, deep family interest in Almonte, and my wife was a graduate of a Royal High School, and she'll kill me if I said the date, but it has something to do with the change in the millennium, I'm just saying. But, and my mother and father-in-law still live in the city to this day, so I spend a great deal of time, both working and recreating, visiting family here in Almonte. I'd like to express to you my sincere approval and support of our school resource officers in the schools, that we have a longstanding history of our SRO program, as you all know, and that although our staffing issues are of great concern, we have along with just about every police department in our country right now, a reduced interest, I guess you could say, in the law enforcement profession, but we are, with the support of our city council here at Almonte, coming up with some creative inroads to deal with those problems, so we are very optimistic going into 2023, that we will solve those staffing problems, and be able to better provide a service of school resource officers to you. I have a variety of interests in the police department, serving as a detective, special enforcement officer, working my way up the chain of command, and although I was never a school resource officer in this capacity that you're familiar with, there was previously a program through the Mountain View School District, in our elementary school program, where for three years, I served as a school resource officer at the Voorhees School, and I still interact with parents and kids that I had interactions with there, that's proved to me how valuable that is, so I see my time is coming to an end, but I thought it was imperative to introduce myself to you, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Jake Fisher, I know there's two gentlemen there, can you just introduce who's with you tonight?
Yes, I have detectives Joseph Trejo and Detective Wyatt Rehneer.
Thank you, Police Chief, yes.
Is there any way we can extend time, I don't know if they wanted to share something, or?
Sure, absolutely, well, sure, no problem, go right ahead.
We may, thank you so much for that, appreciate it, it's a pleasure to meet you all, my name is Wyatt Rehneer, I am the president of the Almonte Police Officers Association, Joe Trejo is my vice president, and we're just here in solidarity and support of our chief, of our agency, of our schools, and our community, we love all our schools and our community, and as the chief was kind of alluding to as well, sadly, school safety is just, it's on our minds more and more, personal lives, now in our professional lives, but we've always had an exceptional working relationship with our schools, our SROs, and trust me, when you call, and we're there, and we always will be, and so we look forward to continuing that, and expanding, if we can, those relationships. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment, would you like to say anything, come on up, come on up.
Detective Trejo with Almonte PD, again, to pay back on what they said, all of us at the police department, a lot of the police officers, including myself, also graduated from Arroyo, by the way, we all have, a large majority of us from the police department, we grew up in this neighborhood, and we're from this neighborhood, and we want to, our families still live here, and we just want to continue that, that tradition that was instilled in us when we were kids, and continue it, and that's why we all work here now, because of the community, and I, you know, I've worked with all of you in some capacity, and we just see family, and we want to continue that family relationship, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the public comment, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Next, I'd like to call up for a public comment, Ms. Mary Valencia, Almonte resident slash parent, welcome to the Almonte Union High School District.
Good, okay.
You're good.
So I'm going to go ahead and skip the pleasantries, because we're well past that point, I've attempted to contact you at least three times, I attended this board meeting two weeks ago because of the closures at the wellness centers at the high school, but then, I became aware of the issues at the transition center. I also am a lifelong resident of Almonte, I'm a product of this district, I'm also a product of PCC, I have two sons that attend Gidley School, he is a special needs student, and then I have a son that attended Arroyo, but for a multitude of reasons, now attends Ladesma, so now you're affecting both my sons, you're affecting both my sons' health and well-being. I think that we can do, I don't agree with you pitting PCC against the Transitional Center, I think that we can support both things, I think that we can support higher education, and also give our most vulnerable students a place that does not violate safety and health code, that doesn't violate those things, and offers them a dignified space. So like I said, you are now affecting both my sons, so you're going to hear me twice, you're going to hear me twice. You're gonna hear me at these meetings and at the ballot box. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Paul Arellano. He is a parent, would like to talk on the Granada Transition Center. Welcome, Mr. Arellano.
Good evening. I am a parent of a disabled student at the Granada Transitional Center. This site is on tonight's agenda, and I really hope you do have some solutions because there is currently, as she pointed to, no ADA-approved restroom large enough for adult diaper changes, no wheelchair access to the main office, no cafeteria malfunctioning HVAC systems, no private space for the nurse, 20 to 40-year-old dilapidated trailers used this classroom. Last Tuesday, the El Monte City Council chastised you, board, for how you handled this site. These aren't my words. This is all on video for the, the last city council meeting. Quote, "First, we support El Monte, and then we support others." Another council person said, "We're dealing with students who are disenfranchised, who have seemingly been shoved aside in facilities that are squalored." Yet another said, "Deep concerns of litigation come into fruition." Counsel, please note that. Another said, "The decision made by the school board costs taxpayers money, and it is no small amount, $1.1 million." Another said, "The council should consider a resolution speaking against the El Monte School Board because I think it's a wrong decision." This may be the biggest quote of all. Not my words. It's on video. This location represents a departure from the high school district's responsibility to serve the needs of the special needs students and a breach of contract with the voters who voted for the measure and are seeing tax dollars wasted and promises not being kept. Talk about a moment of silence for that. I hope in addition to ideas, you present a reasonable timeframe and plan of action because tomorrow, and the day after that, and the day after that, and the day after that, our disabled students will show up to class in the same inhumane conditions that exist today. And I remind you, it's because the PCC students didn't wanna get on a bus and go to school like the rest of us did. I hope you can understand the frustrations of parents as the last scenario dragged on for a couple of years, and we still don't have a nice place for our students to maximize their potential in. You expressed your support for higher education with respect to PCC. How about giving some of that love to our disabled students? I really hate to say this, but I'm glad that my son can't understand what's going on here because he would be heartbroken as we saw his schoolmate Lupe two weeks ago and heard of another student saying, "No more school." Come on, board, you did enough to get elected. Now please, put your talents and the funds that you have at your discretion to work for our most vulnerable students, the disabled students. I look forward to the day when I can come and see a nice presentation like Arroyo just had for our students and staff in a nice back and forth with you guys questioning them and grilling them. Come on, I'm here, as it says here, defend the castle. I'm here to defend the disabled students. Mr. Nguyen, one of your quotes was, "We gotta look at the system." I ask you, I throw it back at you, "Look at the system." Another quote you said, Mr. Nguyen, was, "We need to do a better job." You took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment, Mr. Arellano. Next, I'd like to call up Ms. Kathy Aridia. And I'm not sure what she's talking about because it doesn't have any comments on here. So otherwise, I would tell, tell us. Alright.
I'll tell.
Great.
Can you hear me from here?
Yes.
Good, because I can't get taller.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, trustees and community members. I am Kathy Aridia, and I am the Chair of the El Monte Union High School District Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. We are an independent committee required under Proposition 39, and I am speaking on behalf of the committee. Under Code Section 15278, Part B, the Oversight Committee must promptly alert the public to any waste or improper expenditure of bond revenue. I am here tonight as the Chair of the Bond Oversight Committee to alert the Board of Trustees and the taxpayers of El Monte Union High School District that recent actions undertaken by the Board constitutes a waste of public funds, of our tax dollars. From May 6th, from May 6, 2020 to June 23, 2022, the Board followed the necessary steps to award DLR Group the Adult Transition Center project and filing the project with DSA. To save money, I will, to save time, I will not repeat the process, but you have them listed on your copy of my comments. All of the activities listed have brought this project to the cusp of the construction phase, scheduled to begin July 23rd. However, on January 18, 2023, the Board by a vote of three to two, with trustees Padilla, Torres de Seigres, and Nguyen voting yes, directed the staff to cancel the contracts with DLR Group for the Adult Transition Program at the Rosemead Adult Education Center. By canceling this project and entering into a new lease agreement with PCC, the Board of Trustees has wasted over $1.1 million of taxpayer money from Measure HS. Education Code Section 15264 states that the Bond Oversight Committee is supposed to be an active probing process, and members of the Oversight Committee must promptly alert the public of, to any waste and improper expenditure of school construction bond money. And said unauthorized expenditures or waste of the school bond revenues are to be vigorously investigated, and the courts are to act swiftly to restrain any improper expenditures or waste. The Bond Oversight Committee is an independent body who is accountable to the taxpayers of El Monte Union High School District. The committee will be submitting a request to the district to appoint an independent legal counsel for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to investigate, and if necessary, seek injunction to prevent the waste of taxpayer dollars by this Board of Trustees, specifically three of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment, Ms. Kathy Aridia. Last, we have a public comment by Mr. Cosme Jimenez. Welcome, Mr. Jimenez.
Okay. Good evening, board members and.
Good evening, staff.
I have a couple of comments here. We were talking about waste. You gotta go back 10 years, the previous super majority, how much money they wasted. They're going to the council the last 10 years. How many millions were wasted? That should be a full-time job if you're gonna talk about this item, you know, wasting. That means there were three majorities when they were not wasting money. Now we're finding out you're wasting. Something is going on here, you know, you gotta. And congratulations to the new super majority. At least you have a, you don't belong to any teams or super teams or Team El Montes or whatever. That's a big plus to you. Congratulations. Now finally, we're gonna get something done here, you know. Also, a quick comment before I forget. Student records kept by the Promise Foundation and the community partners. That's confidential records given to the Promise Foundation in April 2015, when the Team El Monte was a superpower, but his main commander Quintero, it was an order right here. Give it to them in three votes. I don't know if Mr. Salzado was involved. They were receiving orders anyway from Team El Monte. The problem is when you receive orders, your brain gets rusty, and you cannot use it anymore. That's why I see a couple of members here having a problem to recover from being Team El Monte. So I wish them good luck. Also, talking about dictators. Dictators cannot survive without a group being manipulated. Something for the Team El Monte members to remember. Also, congratulations to the board member, Stella Seigres. I, I know she's being attacked because she's acting like an adult, and the person acting like a child attacking her. It needs to wake up and do some research also. Because when you belong to a team for a long time, and then you wake up overnight that you don't belong, you don't belong, your brain doesn't work anymore. That's a problem too. And also, talking about Team El Monte being ruling the city, buying the school board seats and council member seats. That's what they, they're still doing it right now. The only problem is it's a different name. They don't call it Team El Monte anymore. They call it Conservative Business and Residence for Responsible Government, Sponsored by Marijuana Companies, the new Team El Monte. This lady in the, David Walsh, is the one that ran the campaign for Maria Morales. So as you to know, they want to be a mayor. She wanted to bring the whole marijuana companies to El Monte. Luckily, she lost. She was ready to start a new business here, El Monte. So congratulations to the new board members, the new majority. Actually, we have people that went out like adults, not children. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment, Mr. Cosme Jimenez. Appreciate it. Alright, next item on the agenda is, before we go on, I, I had told you initially that I wanted to follow in the footsteps of Professor Torres de Seigres, but I tend to be very forgetful. I keep forgetting to call on our trustee Ruben Carrasco, and I apologize for that. But I also wanted to read a part of a poem. And again, I'm taking after my, my mentor, Professor Torres de Seigres. When she was president, it was something that I liked. I'm just kind of a green edit Professor Torres de Seigres, and I'm always forgetting. So I'm gonna have to tape it on there. But before I begin, I, we begin the, the next item. I'd like to read some stanzas from "The Hill We Climb" by Amanda Gorman. And I don't know if you guys remember who Amanda Gorman was. She was the youngest poet laureate that spoke at President Joe Biden's inaugural address. And she's only 22 years old, and she's here from Los Angeles. And I'm not gonna read the full text, but I'm gonna read just a couple stanzas and read as follows. "To compose a country committed to all cultures, colors, characters, and conditions of men. And so we lift our gaze not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must first put our differences aside. We lay down our arms so we can reach out our arms to one another. We seek harm to none and harmony for all. Let the globe, if anything else, say this is true. That even as we grieved, we grew. That even as we hurt, we hoped. That even as we tired, we tried. That we'll forever be tied together victorious." And that's just a small portion. I invite you to read the entire poem from Amanda Gorman, young 22-year-old, youngest poet laureate that got to speak at the inaugural address. With that being said, we'll go ahead and move on to item B for boy, item number seven on the agenda, which is communication from union representatives of EMUEA, which is our El Monte Union Educators Association, our teachers. And then from CSEA, the California School Employees Association, which is our classified employees, which includes all those that are not teachers, but like gardeners and all of the others that are not certificated. So the representative from EMUEA, if you are here, come on up. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Matt Koffler.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Board, District Administrators. Ruben, how are you?
Good, and yourself?
Very well spoken, young man. I'm breaking things. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Matt Koffler, a product of the El Monte Union High School District. A proud Panther, Rosemead High School alumni, class of 1992. We had played a lot of practices and games together with Mr. President Padilla. How competitive you are is the same in how competitive I am. I'm a proud member of the El Monte Union Education Association. I'm currently the union director at the Granada, Granada Adult Transition Center. Today, I have the privilege of speaking on behalf of more than 400 union members. While some are content, a significant number of staff members are not fine. Some feel unsupported, some feel unacknowledged, and some feel left out. I am one of them. Working at the Granada site, I have the difficult task of addressing our union members' concerns. As most of you know, there's a lot to be concerned about regarding our site. And unfortunately, we are not the only site with similar concerns that need to be addressed. The Granada staff perseveres. Our students are consistently happy to see us. They show up knowing that they'll be greeted with smiles, ready to accomplish the day's activities. Our staff's commitment to excellence pushes us through hardships to ensure our students comes first. Our teachers, district-wide, went to work today, teaching students with disabilities, English language learners. Those were emotional needs. Today, those students went home, enriched and empowered with more knowledge and 21st century skills. This is because our staff is dedicated to our students. We are dedicated to their enrichment. We are dedicated to them. But who's dedicated to us? Who's willing to support staff in ways that foster better classroom learning for our students? Who's willing to make connections and build relationships with staff and students? We, as a union, are asking you to step up to perform these roles. We are asking you to do your jobs, just as we do our jobs, every minute of every day for every student. Be the leaders that our staff and students deserve. Fulfill your role of serving the students, which is your first priority and the reasons why you're sitting where you are right now. Help us to help the students to ultimately help the community. Lee Aykoka said, "If you start with good people, you lay out the rules, you communicate to your employees, you motivate them and reward them. If we do all these things effectively, you cannot miss." These are characteristics of good leader, and leadership is what we need. As leaders on our campuses, we still leadership qualities in our students. We encourage students to be empathetic, be supportive, clean up after yourselves and others, assist fellow students when in need, academically support their peers, hold each other accountable. We instill these qualities because we are all a part of a team, working together to build a better tomorrow. Everyone has a job to do. We hold our students accountable. They hold each other accountable, and now it's, it's our turn to hold you guys accountable. Be more involved. Support our students and staff members. When was the last time you went to someone's room and told them, "You're doing a good job"? A simple pat on the shoulder, a few words of affirmation goes a long way. Engage in conversation. Promote empathy district-wide by showing empathy. Humble yourselves. Be present, not only for the sake of being seen, but by engaging with students and staff in a positive, colloquial manner. Be present at the start of school. Welcoming students as they get off their buses or walk from their lengthy walk from home to school. Provide students with consistency which will add to their enrichment. This can be obtained by making temporary staff permanent, which can alleviate any feelings of uncertainty and announce to staff and students alike, "You acknowledge the difficulties that still exist post-pandemic and want to continue providing for the best of them." Show you care. Good leaders, there are pillars of successful organizations. I, along with the educators, the El Monte Union High School District, will continue to lead our students to a successful future. We are proud educators. I'll leave you with this quote. "In a completely rational society, the best of us would be teachers, and the rest of us would have to settle for something else." Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Matt Koffler from El Monte Union Educators Association. Is there a representative from the Classified California School Employees Association? Is there a representative from the Classified California School Employees Association? Okay, with nobody being here, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item C on tonight's agenda from Wednesday, February 1st. See for Charlie, it's oral/written communication, and at this time, we're on item number one, C1. Board member Carlos Salcedo.
Just a couple comments. First of all, from yesterday's groundbreaking, just wanted to thank all the staff at Arroyo for the great work they did in putting the groundbreaking together yesterday. It was just nice to see the community out there, supporting us, different assembly members and senators and city council members, and our police department was out there. There's always been a deep history with all of them, so it's nice when they come out and celebrate with us. It's gonna be even nicer when they come out and celebrate when we do the ribbon cutting. So thank you to them for coming out. Just one thing I noticed yesterday, and I wanted to just commend, is Mr. Flores still here?
No, they're gone.
I thought he was sitting back there. But I stayed back really late because my son was practicing anyway, so I stayed back. Just I might as well have waited for him to finish, so I did. But while everybody was breaking down amongst the maintenance workers, amongst the custodians that were breaking down, every single administrator was there, breaking down alongside with them. And it's just something I noticed about their style. I appreciated that, and I wanted to just to mention that here publicly so that they know that that was noticed, because it goes a long way when you're the leader of the school. And if you want to talk the talk, you better walk the walk. And I appreciate that, and Mrs. Zuniga, if you could pass that along. I do appreciate that. And it's just a reminder that I know Friday, we have a big event, right, Mr. Zuniga? Our lunar year event here in the parking lot. So it's just a reminder to all of our community to come out and celebrate with us. We hope to see all the schools participate. That's all. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Board Member Salcedo. Mr. Board Member Florentio Briones.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of items. First, as Mr. Salcedo already spoke to, yesterday I had the opportunity to be at Arroyo High School to celebrate the groundbreaking of their stadium project. I was very happy to see how many folks were also there in attendance to celebrate this momentous occasion. It's always a pleasure to get to see everybody when we come together and to let the community know that we continue to invest in our facilities as they have asked us to by supporting the bond measures that they have approved over the years. Secondly, I wanted to congratulate Mountain View High School on their recent basketball wins. I had the pleasure of attending two basketball games over the last couple of weeks, actually three basketball games over the last couple of weeks, including last week's game between Mountain View and South Elmonte High School, which was a senior night. So it was really great to see parents there. I mean, the games have been really well attended, but it was great to see parents there celebrating their students as they were recognized, those seniors that are on the team that evening. And of course, congratulations to Mountain View on their win over the South Elmonte Eagles. I'm always cognizant of the fact that I represent all of our schools, so I can't necessarily cheer louder for one over the other, but I did feel a great sense of pride being at my alma mater and having them win their basketball game that evening. And then lastly, I do have a written communication that was presented to me. Dr. Zuniga, if you'll pass out the copies to the board. This, what appears to be a report, was mailed to me recently, and it makes some very serious allegations here. And I think it's important that the community hears these allegations because clearly somebody had enough interest in this matter to, it appears, hire somebody to begin this investigation and then send it out to, I assume, myself and maybe other board members. But I received this recently. It's addressed to Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, Public Integrity Division, to Deputy District Attorney Redacted regarding Ricardo Padilla. And it reads, "Dear Redacted, our office submits this investigative report to your office pursuant to the request dated Redacted. For additional information and documentation, Redacted can be contacted upon the information provided in this report, as well as that which can be provided by Redacted to open an official investigation to establish the residency of Redacted Board Trustee Ricardo Padilla. As probable cause strongly suggests, Padilla does not reside within the boundaries of the Elmonte Union High School District as required by law. Investigation objective and finding. The objective of our investigation was to determine where Board Trustee Ricardo Padilla resides as information surfaced has strongly indicated he was not residing at the residency declared as a member of the Elmonte Union High School District, being 10181 Bajer Street, Elmonte, California 91733. Rather, Padilla was on multiple occasions within the recent past by Redacted and/or others of driving his Nissan Altima onto and out of the residential property of 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, California 91706, suggesting residency at this location. His vehicle was not observed at the Bajer Street address on any occasion which would suggest residency. Reportedly, the residence at the Bajer Street address is owned and occupied by the parents of Padilla, while the property on Main Avenue in Baldwin Park is owned by a Juan Padilla, believed to be a relative of Ricardo Padilla. Residency by Ricardo Padilla at the Main Avenue address in Baldwin Park violates applicable California law and is evidence of false representation made by Padilla as a Board Trustee of the Elmonte Union High School District. Although our investigation was limited in scope and duration, convincing evidence was obtained to establish the existence of probable cause to believe Ricardo Padilla resides outside the boundaries of the Elmonte Union High School District, yet maintains a false representation to the district that his residency is within school district boundaries of Elmonte. Therefore, it is requested the Public Integrity Division accept the information contained in this report, as well as other information which may be provided by Redacted, to initiate its own investigation with the goal of seeking criminal prosecution of Ricardo Padilla should the investigation warrant such. Page two. Subject: Ricardo Padilla. Date of birth: April 3, 1973. Identification background: Forty-eight years of age. Padilla was first elected to the Elmonte Union High School District Board in November of 2013. He was re-elected in November of 2017. His term will end November of 2022. The records completed and submitted to the Elmonte Union High School District by Padilla identifies his residential address at 10181 Bajer Street, Elmonte, California 91733. His cell number is, and I won't read that out to the record. It is understood the owners of this residence identified as Maria and Sergio Ramos are the parents of Ricardo Padilla, yet we have no confirmation of this fact. Los Angeles County Assessors Office, South Elmonte, 626-258-6001, I'm assuming is their phone number, confirms the real property is owned by Maria and Sergio Ramos as of December 14, 2004. This address is within the boundaries of the school district and therefore qualifies Padilla to sit as a Board Trustee. In recent months, information came to the attention of Redacted that Ricardo Padilla was not residing at the Bajer Street address, but rather at 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, California, and here it lists a zip code of 91739. We are given to understand, Redacted on at least one occasion and possibly others, observed Padilla leave a board meeting at the school district offices during the later evening hour and travel route which took Padilla to the Main Avenue address in Baldwin Park, where, with the use of a remote device, opened the electronic-controlled sliding driveway gate to enter the property and closed the gate behind him. We expect Redacted can provide factual information to your office to substantiate these observations, which supplement those made during the course of this investigation. A check with the South Elmonte Los Angeles County Assessors Office on Redacted confirmed the property at 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, California 91706, has been owned by a Juan Padilla since June of 2001. We believe this owner is more fully identified as 44-year-old Juan Carlos Padilla, most likely a relative of Ricardo Padilla. Database comprehensive report. Upon receipt of this assignment, we obtained a 10-page database comprehensive report dated February 9, 2021, which we enclose with the report for your review. This report compiles information on a nationwide sweep basis through a variety of electronic search engines. The report verifies the subject's name, but with aliases of Ricardo Padilla Perez and Ricardo Perez Padilla. You will note a list of criminal records on pages three through five, primarily documenting a driving under the influence charge and driving on a suspended revoked license in 2008 in Sonoma County, California. Case numbers SCR546926 and SCR572790. Other cases in 2010 appear to be for a driving after an interlock device was ordered, driving without a license, and possessing document not government-issued. Sonoma Court County case number SCR582765. Beginning on page five of the report, we highlight the address summary, which reports the most current and probable address for Padilla at 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, California 91706-1634, reported July of 2001 through January 3, 2021. It is our understanding the address appearing under the address summary caption are those addresses which the subject reports in various situations. Page three include submission of an application for a loan and a variety of public records completed. You will note nowhere on the list of 10, or actually eight, addresses is there the Bajer Street address. Additionally, drawing your attention to page seven of the report is a caption for voter registrations. One was found with the date of registration being June 4, 1999, wherein Padilla reported his address at the time of registration as being 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, California 91706. We understand pursuant to the information provided by Redacted that Padilla's current voter registration on file with the Los Angeles County Clerk Recorder provides a Bajer Street address. Lastly, on page six, the property listed located at 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, California 91706, identifies the owner as Juan Padilla with a purchase date of May 18, 2001. The report shows no current property deeds found in the name of Ricardo Padilla. Under the caption of possible relatives found on page eight of the report, the name Juan Carlos Padilla, age 44, year of birth 1976, is listed. Employment, work schedule. As previously mentioned, Ricardo Padilla was first elected to the Elmonte Union High School District Board in November 2013. His current term runs to November of 2022. The Elmonte Union High School District Office is located at 3537 Johnson Avenue, Elmonte, California 91731, and it provides the district's phone number. Board meetings are held the first Wednesday of each month. If necessary, a second board meeting is held on the third Wednesday. Board meetings on the first Wednesday begin at 5:00 p.m. and can last up until 11:00 p.m. Board meetings on the third Wednesdays, if held, typically start at 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. and last for several hours depending upon the topic or subject matter. We are informed Padilla is employed as an outreach consultant with the Elmonte City School District with its office at 3540 Lexington Avenue, Elmonte, California 91731. Phone number is provided. Padilla's assignment is in the Department of Child Welfare, but is assigned to a variety of school sites during the week. His work schedule is as follows, however, during the course of our investigation, found the schedule may vary. Monday, Gidley School, 10226 Lower Zusa Road, Elmonte, California 91731. Tuesday, Sherpster Elementary School, 420 Gibson Road, Elmonte, California 91731. Wednesday, Potrero Elementary School, 2611 Potrero Avenue, Elmonte, California 91733. Thursday, AM, Potrero, PM, Vista Elementary School, 4300 Estou Avenue, Elmonte, California 91731. Believe that to be Rio Vista Elementary School. And Friday, Gidley School, 10226 Lower Zusa Road. Padilla's daily work schedule is reported to be 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Page four. Vehicle. The assignment received identified the lone vehicle owned and utilized by Ricardo Padilla to be a 2006 silver Nissan Altima bearing California license plate number Redacted. Registration record ran with the Department of Motor Vehicles dated Redacted, confirms the above vehicle registered to Ricardo Padilla with vehicle identification number Redacted. The DMV does not release the address associated with the registration due to California law. We expect the District Attorney's Office can receive the address pursuant to an investigation. Of interest is that the registration issued, Redacted, is in an expired status as of Redacted. The DMV record dated Redacted shows the registration in progress over an apparent small certification issue. Please note that during the course of our surveillance activities, which will be explained further in this report, observed to the back right portion of the vehicle's trunk lid was a large and very noticeable dent. The rear and side windows are tinted. Photographs and videos. Submitted with this report are a total of five photographs depicting the property at 4922 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park, and the Padilla 2006 Nissan Altima parked in the driveway inside the electronic-controlled sliding gate of the residence. Three photographs were taken on the morning of Redacted at approximately 6:20 and 6:25 a.m., while the two photographs taken on Redacted were taken at approximately 6:40 a.m. The approximate six-to-seven-foot-tall sliding electronic wrought iron gate equipped with a screen panel and pedestrian gate makes it difficult and nearly impossible to see through the gate from the street. Therefore, when parked inside, the Padilla vehicle is not noticeable. However, walking on the sidewalk and up to the gate in front of the Main Avenue address, the vehicle is clearly observable. When the gate opens, as we observed on the mornings of Redacted and Redacted, the Padilla vehicle is easily observed backing out. We also possess several videos in short duration depicting the Padilla vehicle arriving at the Main Avenue address on the evening of Redacted, as well as backing out and leaving the Main Avenue property on the morning of Redacted and again, Redacted. The 10 seconds of video taken on the evening of Redacted and the 24 seconds of video taken on the morning of Redacted depicting the Padilla vehicle backing out and leaving the Main Avenue address was taken on Redacted. We will make these video clips available to you upon your request. Surveillance details. Our plan was to pick up Padilla as he left Gidley School anticipating pursuant to his work schedule, he would be leaving at or around 4:00 p.m. Unfortunately, his vehicle was nowhere to be found and/or at or around Gidley School. We did not check the other school sites. No surveillance was made of Padilla this day. Page five. However, we took the occasion to observe the residential property at 10181 Bajer Street, Elmonte, California 91733. Several vehicles were parked inside the chain link fence and gate of the single-story family residential dwelling. The Padilla 2006 Nissan Altima was not observed. The time was approximately 2:40 p.m. We proceeded to the address in Baldwin Park, 4942 Main Avenue, in order to surveil the location in anticipation of future sub rosa. As described by Redacted, although recently upgraded and renovated, the roadway has impacted parking, yet we were able to find positions thereafter to conduct surveillance. We noted the large white electronic-controlled sliding gate, block wall, and wrought iron fence along the sidewalk of the front yard littered with a variety of objects and many shrubs and trees limiting view from the sidewalk to the front of the single-story family dwelling, which sits well back off the sidewalk. Nonetheless, we later learned the Padilla vehicle is easily observed through and/or over the wrought iron fencing attached to the shortened block wall adjacent to the large driveway gate, which allowed photographs to be taken of the vehicle on subsequent occasions. There does not appear to be a garage present at the address. As we would subsequently observe and as indicated by Redacted, Padilla must possess a remote-controlled device which activates the opening and closing of the sliding gate without Padilla having to exit his vehicle to enter the property. Depending upon the timing of activating the device and traffic conditions, Padilla can simply continue his turning motion from Main Avenue into the driveway without ever coming to a stop. He can then activate the closure phase, closing the gate behind him, and there's a Redacted line. Padilla was surveilled leaving Potrero Elementary School in his Nissan vehicle traveling to and entering the property at 4942 Main Avenue, Baldwin Park. Redacted board would-be meeting this evening beginning at 5:00 p.m. We took up a position along the east curb line of Potrero Avenue facing north, south of the Padilla Nissan vehicle we observed facing south parked along, at the west curb line of Potrero Avenue, adjacent to what appeared to be the kindergarten playground of the school. At 11:43 p.m., we observed a male figure crossing the playground, exiting a gate along the sidewalk's edge, then entering the Nissan. He was alone, dressed in a suit, carrying a number of objects. From the distance we were stationed, we could not positively identify the male subject as Padilla. We had a colored photograph of Padilla's photograph taken from the Elmonte Union High School District website depicting each board member. Additionally, Redacted Padilla participated in the board meeting by way of Zoom in a classroom at Potrero Elementary School. We had no doubt but the male person we observed enter and then drive off in the Nissan was in fact Ricardo Padilla. Making a U-turn on Potrero Avenue directly from his park position, Padilla drove north, then turned east on Garvey Avenue. By the way, from Potrero, it says Portray Elementary, I believe it should be Potrero Elementary School, the Bajer Street address for Padilla declares he resides is approximately eight tenths of a mile from the site. The direct route from Potrero Elementary School would be the same route Padilla was now traveling east on Garvey Avenue, but with a left turn to travel north on Central Avenue. Central Avenue ends at the intersecting roadway with Bajer Street, where the driveway of the parent's address at 10181 is directly in line with Central Avenue. Instead, Padilla turned north on Merced Avenue, then east, page six, on Rio Hondo Parkway, which turns slightly to the north, then east on Mildred Street, taking him to San Anita Avenue. Turning north, Padilla then took the on-ramp, traveling eastbound on Interstate 10, then north on the 605 freeway, exiting Lower Zusa Road. He completely bypassed the Bajer Street address. Exiting Lower Zusa Road, Padilla continued straight from the off-ramp onto River Grade Road. Our turn was to the east, taking a completely different route to the 4900 block of Main Avenue, wherein we arrived parking in front of 4965 Main Avenue, just as we observed the Padilla Nissan vehicle pass our location. just as we observed the Padilla Nissan vehicle pass our location south, then turning left onto, into the opening sliding gate without having to come to a stop. The gate closed as quickly as it opened behind him. About ten seconds of video was taken of his arrival and entry into the property. It was now midnight and dark, yet characteristics of the vehicle can be discerned, showing the vehicle was that of Ricardo Padilla. We did not continue to follow Padilla on River Grade Road. As we understand, the road is somewhat isolated, potentially allowing someone to detect if they are being followed. And there's a redacted line. Following our observation of Padilla arriving at the Main Avenue property at midnight on redacted, we returned to the location the following morning at six-ten A.M., parking just south of the driveway of four-zero-six-five Main Avenue, at the west curb line providing a view across the street of the Padilla residence. At approximately six-twenty-five A.M., we walked the east sidewalk, passing by the forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue property, observing through and over the wrought iron fencing, the Nissan vehicle parked facing east towards the dwelling in the driveway. Photographs were taken. Parked in the above-described location at the west curb line of Main Avenue, we observed at seven-twenty-eight A.M. the sliding gate open. The Padilla Nissan backed out of the northbound, backed out into the northbound lane of Main Avenue, then proceeded north on Main Avenue, passing our location headed towards Live Oak Avenue. We were able to observe the vehicle turn left or west on Live Oak Avenue. This is the route taken by Padilla as described by redacted. Traveling to the Main Avenue address following board meetings, as well as leaving the property to go to work at his assigned school site. That redacted morning, Padilla's schedule had him at Potrero Elementary School. We arrived at the site at eight-oh-five A.M. This Nissan vehicle was nowhere to be found. Prior thereto and at approximately eight A.M., we drove by the Bodger Street address on our way to Potrero. The Nissan vehicle was not at that location. We observed a redacted California license plate number redacted. Registration check showed it registered to Sergio Ramos, the homeowner, along with Maria Ramos, and believed to be the parents of Ricardo Padilla. Completing work in redacted on an unrelated matter, we decided to make an attempt to surveil Padilla to determine if he proceeded to the Main Avenue address following his departure from work. On that day, his assignment was at Gidley School. However, arriving at the site at one-fifty P M., his vehicle was nowhere to be found. We checked the other school sites he is assigned to, which included Sherpsir and Rio Vista Elementary Schools. Again, his vehicle was not observed. We proceeded to Potrero Elementary School, arriving at two-twenty P M. His Nissan vehicle was parked in the front parking lot. We surveilled the vehicle when at three P M., we observed a, page seven. Male person we firmly believe was Ricardo Padilla, based upon his photograph, entered the vehicle and exit the parking lot, traveling north on Potrero Avenue. He was alone. Again, Padilla traveled east on Garvey Avenue, north on Merced Avenue, then on Rio Hondo Parkway to east Mildred Street, arriving at San Anita Avenue. He traveled north, passing Interstate ten, turning west on Valley Boulevard, then north on Arden Avenue. This route would take him to Gidley Elementary School. However, rather than stopping at the school site, he continued past the site north of Arden out of our view. Losing contact with Padilla, we proceeded directly to the Main Avenue address as taking, as taking an eastbound roadway from Arden would lead to Bolden Park. Our arrival at forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue was at three-twenty-five P M. We walked along the sidewalk, confirming Padilla's vehicle was not in the driveway inside the property. At four-thirty P M., we ended our surveillance, not knowing when Padilla would arrive at the residence, although fully expected at some time later that evening he would do so. With respect to Padilla's route traveling north on Arden Avenue from Lower Zusa Road, we were informed by redacted Padilla might have been traveling to Monrovia or Padilla, where Padilla may have an unknown type of relationship with a person named Karen Smith, believed to reside at four-oh-four East Greystone, uh, Monrovia, California, nine-one-oh-one-six. And there's a redacted line. There's a second redacted line. Confirmed to the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees was meeting this evening set to start at six P M., we returned to Potrero Elementary School where at six P M. we observed Padilla's Nissan parked at the west curb line of Potrero Avenue, adjacent to the kindergarten playground, as we observed previously on March third, twenty-twenty-one. It was not, it was not known for how long this board meeting would last. At eight-fifty-three P M., Padilla was observed exiting the same gate or the fence of the playground. He was alone. The vehicle made a U-turn heading for Garvey Avenue. The vehicle proceeded east on Garvey Avenue to north on Merced Avenue, then took Rio Hondo Parkway, then east on Mildred Street, turning left to travel north on San Anita Avenue. Once again, Padilla did not proceed to the nearby Bodger Street address. The Nissan continued north on San Anita Avenue, then turned west onto Valley Boulevard, reaching Velma Avenue. The Nissan turned right, traveling north on Velma Avenue, then shortly thereafter coming to a stop essentially in the middle of the street, with the vehicle running and its lights on. We were already traveling north on Velma Avenue and continued past Padilla's position, ultimately noting the address in front of where Padilla stopped was thirty-eight thirty-nine Velma Avenue. We could not determine with certainty, but it seemed as though he was stopped talking to someone on the street or sidewalk. Shortly thereafter, Padilla left the location, ultimately making a number of turns, which took him onto Temple City Avenue, where he took the westbound on-ramp of Interstate ten. We followed, maintaining a safe distance and altering position. He continued west, taking the Alameda Street exit into downtown Los Angeles. He proceeded south on Alameda Street through First Street, continuing south. At that time, there was very little traffic present. Under the circumstances, we decided to end our surveillance out of concern Padilla would notice him being followed. We did not want to jeopardize the investigation. It is not known where he was headed nor for how long he remained in the downtown area. However, we confirmed the presence of his Nissan vehicle in the driveway at Main Avenue, at the Main Avenue address the following morning at six-thirty-five A.M. Leading us to conclude, from downtown L.A., Padilla traveled back to his home, forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park. Page eight. There's a redacted line. After ending our surveillance of prior night as described above, we returned to the Main Avenue address the morning of redacted at six-thirty-five A.M. As we did not stake out the location Wednesday night to see if Padilla returned to the address from downtown Los Angeles. Walking the sidewalk, we observed and photographed the Padilla Nissan vehicle parked in the driveway inside the gate, as we had observed the vehicle previously on the morning of redacted. At seven-forty A.M., parked at the west curb line of Main Avenue in front of forty-nine forty-seven and essentially direct across from the Padilla driveway, we observed at seven-forty A.M. the iron gate slide open and the Nissan vehicle back out into the northbound lane, then proceeding north to Live Oak Avenue. We videoed the opening of the gate and movement of the vehicle. Padilla was the lone occupant. However, due to the rising sun and shadows, the image of Padilla is not clear in the video to be able to make a positive identification of him. However, the figure observed appeared identical to the figure of Padilla we had observed previously and consistent with his photograph as a board member. Shortly thereafter and at seven-fifty-five A.M., we arrived at Potrero Elementary School where Padilla was scheduled. His vehicle was not observed. We then traveled to the nearest school site Padilla is assigned during the week being Rio Vista Elementary School, arriving at eight-ten A.M. We observed the Nissan vehicle parked in the handicap parking space in front of the site. A handicap placard was hanging from the interior rearview mirror. Enclosures. With this report, please find attached a copy of the ten-page database comprehensive report on Ricardo Padilla dated February ninth, twenty-twenty-one. We also attached Padilla's board member photograph from the Almani Union High School District website. Lastly, we provide a color print of each of the five photographs taken on March fourth and March eighteen, twenty-twenty-one, depicting the Main Avenue address and the Padilla vehicle parked in the driveway inside the driveway gate. Additional information. We're given to understand redacted can provide your office with additional detailed information on which your office might pursue a search warrant for the premises of forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park, California, nine-one-seven three-three. Believe that's the wrong zip code. Where it is relieved Ricardo Padilla has established residency. And there is a redacted sec, section at the end of that paragraph. Uh, thereby providing further evidence of his residence established at the Main Avenue location. Page nine. Further handling. We hold in abeyance our investigative activities, but offer our services for those investigative activities your office may deem necessary and or appropriate in pursuing this matter, matter, matter further. Uh, there's a redacted section. Enclosures, one, as described in the above enclosure caption, two, redacted. Uh, there follows ten pages of a comprehensive report entitled Ricardo Padilla. Page three out of ten, there's two redacted sections and a reduction, redacted portion down at the bottom, indicating, there's a section indicating possible criminal records, three found. Uh, name on this record, Ricardo Padilla Perez, date of birth, it lists nineteen seventy-three, born forty-seven years ago. Uh, source name, Sonoma County. Match indicators, first name is an exact match, middle name is not matched, last name is an exact match. Date of birth, marginally matched, age, exact match, address, county matched, height, not available, ethnicity, not available. Crime details, September twentieth, two thousand and eight, Sonoma, California. Offense, offense description number one, driving under influence, alcohol above point zero-eight percent. Charges filed on October second, two thousand and eight, case type misdemeanor. Uh, page four of this report. Case number S C R five-four-six-nine-two-six dash one, crime county, Sonoma, status sentenced. Crime type misdemeanor, offense code, uh, two-three-one-five-two B, uh, which I believe is vehicle code. Degree of offense misdemeanor. Court, criminal, plea guilty, disposition convicted. Offense date, September twentieth, two thousand and eight, disposition date, October fourteenth, two thousand and eight. Crime details, September twentieth, two thousand and eight, Sonoma, California, offense description one, drive without license or driving without license, case number S C R five-four-six-nine-two-six dash one. Crime county, Sonoma, status sentenced, crime type misdemeanor, offense code one-two-five-zero-zero A. Again, I believe that's vehicle code. Degree of offense misdemeanor, charges filed, date, October second, two thousand and eight, case type misdemeanor. Court, criminal, plea, no plea, disposition dismissed, offense date, September twentieth, two thousand and eight, disposition date, October fourteen, two thousand and eight. Crime details, September twentieth, two thousand and eight, Sonoma, California. Offense description one, driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs, case number S C R five-four-six-nine-two-six dash one. Crime county, Sonoma, status sentest, sentenced. Crime type misdemeanor, offense code two-three-one-five-two A. Um, I believe that's vehicle code and it says pre-two thousand and fourteen. Degree of offense misdemeanor, charges filed date, October second, two thousand and eight, case type misdemeanor. Court, criminal, plea, no plea, disposition dismissed, offense date, September twentieth, two thousand and eight, disposition date, October fourteen, two thousand and eight. And there are additional cases here, August fifteenth, two thousand and nine, Sonoma, California. Offense description, defective windshield, et cetera, case number S C R five-seven-two-seven-nine-zero dash one. Crime county, Sonoma, status sentenced, crime type misdemeanor, offense code two-six-seven-one-zero, degree of offense, infraction. Charges filed date, November ninth, two thousand and nine, case type misdemeanor. Court, criminal, plea, no plea, disposition dismissed, offense date, August fifteenth, two thousand and nine, disposition date, November seventeen, two thousand and nine. Uh, crime details, August fifteenth, two thousand and nine, Sonoma, California, driving while privileged, suspended or revoked for DUI slash drugs. Case number S C R five-seven-two-seven-nine-zero dash one. Crime county, Sonoma, status sentenced, crime type misdemeanor, offense code one-four-six-oh-one-point-two A. Degree of offense misdemeanor, charges filed date, November ninth, two thousand and nine. Case type misdemeanor, court, criminal, plea, no contest, disposition convicted, offense date, August fifteenth, two thousand and nine, disposition date, November seventeen, two thousand and nine. Crime details, August fifteenth, two thousand and nine, Sonoma, California. Offense description one, driving with suspended license revoked for refusal or excess blood alcohol. Case number S C R five-seven-two-seven-nine-zero dash one. Crime county, Sonoma, status sentenced. Charges filed date, November ninth, two thousand and nine, case type misdemeanor. Court, criminal, plea, no plea, disposition dismissed. There's a redacted section at the bottom. There's additional items here, driving without license, driving while privileged, suspended or revoked for DUI drugs. Driving after interlock device ordered on particular vehicle. Um, possession of documents not government issued. Um, and then there's some addresses provided, forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park, forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, number B, Bolden Park, twenty-eight fifty-four Dutton in Santa Rosa. Eight-eight-eight West Avenue, apartment seven, Santa Rosa, one-five-eleven Buente Avenue, Bolden Park. Uh, an address in Azusa, an address in Almani, forty-twenty-six Shirley Avenue, Almani. Address in Sierra Madre, Madre. Uh, and then an address in Monterey Park. Um, there's additional information regarding address details for the forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park address. Um, owner, Juan Padilla, purchase date, May eighteen, two thousand and one, the purchase price. Uh, square footage for the property, square footage for the dwelling, some additional information provided here. There's also possible relatives listed here. Um, there's a list of folks. There's a photo of Mr. Padilla. Uh, look, appears to have been taken from our, our district website of his photograph and a portion of his bio. There's an address, sorry, there's a photograph here. It says Thursday, redacted, forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park, California. And it's the front of a property with a white fence. There's a photograph that says here Thursday, redacted, six-forty A.M., forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park, California, and a photograph of a silver Nissan Altima with a large dent in the rear. Uh, there's another photograph, Thursday, redacted, six-twenty A.M., forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park, California. Again, the front of a property with a white fence. Thursday, redacted, six-twenty-five A.M., forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park, California. There's an image of what appears to be a silver Nissan in the driveway. Another photograph, Thursday at six-twenty, Thursday, redacted at six-twenty-five A.M., forty-nine forty-two Main Avenue, Bolden Park. Uh, and then a photo of, uh, again of a silver Nissan Altima with a large dent in the trunk lid. And that is it. This is all the written communication that I have this, uh, meeting, Mr. Padilla. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, board member Florencio Briones. Um, next I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Queen Nguyen. If you have any board communications written or oral?
I receive the same package that is handed me when I first get elected or appointed. In addition to a very threatening letter, if I ally with Mr. Padilla, there will be a kind of severe consequence. For the record, I never know Mr. Padilla. I never know Mr. Uh, Secret. I just come here to serve, but the only problem is what I see. If, if the D A already investigate, uh, investigate the problem, let it go, let the D A make decisions. So far, it's just accusation. And nothing been adjudicated yet. To let the law run its course. So why have a character assassination and ambush to discredit the man? I, I have no intention of defending Mr. Padilla. But the thing is, this is a democratic country, let the process, due process go. Let, let the D A take care of the job. So, you know, anybody can get the investigative report, he has like a hundred bucks, seventy-five bucks. But so far, just accusation, nothing proven. People are innocent until proven guilty. If he guilty of those, then he had to pay for it. In the meantime, just respect what he doing. That's, that's all. I never know Mr. Padilla, I never know Mr. Secret. I barely know Mr. Briones because the only time I met him, he was five years ago at the, uh, school ball. Um, uh, C S B A in San Francisco, when I ran for Elementary School District. So let, let the law, you know, take care of it. People are innocent until proven guilty. Why assassinate the character of people and accuse people that, you know, there's no result yet? People have been judged, but the, the case is in the D A office, let them take care of it. Let them take care of it. If he found guilty, then let it be. That's all I can say. But on, on, on another note, you know, uh, today I went to Granada Adult Transition Center. I spent almost two hours from restroom to classroom, inside out. I talked to the teacher, I talked to a proud educator. And, you know, they deserve better, much more better. I mean, I, I'm, I'm telling you, I spent two hour and I, I told Miss Bell, I be back. I be back to observe. What, I mean, they deserve better. They deserve better. But I could say, you know, it's, it's the hardest decision I have to make la, last meeting. Because you know where I'm coming from, I'm an immigrant. And without higher education, I would be where I'm here, but I, before I make that decision, I did the survey on my own. A lot of people stopped at the park, you know, but bought me a phone call. Like this, I want to see Mr. Rubin, more Mr. Rubin in this school district. He's a rare breed. He's a rare breed. He get here right now, it not by luck. A lot of hard work, a lot of sacrifice. When he have a taste of success, of higher education, he, not only he live himself out poverty, but his family, his sibling, a many generation to come. So that's why I always champion higher education and so all the parents. I went to Mountain View, I talked to parents also, they all, they all want the same thing. I mean, their, their parents involvement are very My dad's parents involvement are very strong. But it it but look at the data make me very disappointed. Why has to be that way? You know, this is, you know, people can make American dream realize. I told all the student at Mountain View that I talked to. The stars the limit. It's within your reach. As long as you get enough support and your determination, you make it. I mentor some of the Arroyo kid. They went to the Ivy League. Four year later, the financial reward are tremendous. They make more money than anybody sitting over here. So when you have a taste of success of higher education. You get hooked on and you live the whole you will be get out of this circle of poverty. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Board Member Queen Nguyen. Next, we have Professor Torres de Seguris. Do you have any written or oral communication, Professor Torres de Seguris?
Yeah, I'm very astonished of this investigation. We will see later. It's only an investigation. And let's see how true it is in many aspects. Now, let me tell you what I did this time. This time I I attend Laxton meeting. And in the Laxton meeting, they were talking about the Palm Palm Day ROS. That's the most important important thing. Unfortunately, our policeman left. But Mr. Suniga, Dr. Suniga, we are doing very well with our ROS. Because in this program, this is a very important program that we have every month. In Laxton, they were talking about the importance of the ROS in our schools. It's very, very important. In this program, they were parents that they were giving thank you. Thanks to the program, the students are really right. They are having confidence in studying and keep on going. And I was thinking in our in our Monte Union High School District. Thank you, Dr. Suniga, for keep it all with that program. That program is excellent and we have to keep having here. And our policeman, they unfortunately left, but I wanted to tell them. Thank you very much for your great job of taking care of our students. Because our students are here for study and for start growing as a human beings. Of course, I attend the athletic stadium groundbreaking. Yesterday, it was great and I really admire all the work that Mr. Flores and all his cabinet has been doing in our high school. Unfortunately, I don't have any more to report about that, but I have a big report that I have to to give you later on. About what I've been investigating to help our students. Our students in transition. Those students. Disabled disabled lives matter. Of course that it matters. Matters a lot for me. The same that the regular students. I will talk to you about that later. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member Professor Torres de Seguris. For myself, I'd like to report that I also wanted to acknowledge the the staff. I wanted to thank the staff at Arroyo High School. I did have the opportunity to attend our groundbreaking that we had of the new stadium that we're going to build at. Arroyo High School together with their fields. Thank you to Ms. Norma Macias and Whale Elatar and all of the staff at Arroyo High School that prepared everything in order for it to be a very. An amazing event. I I was thankful that there was no rain like we had when we did the Mountain View event. Arroyo High School was very well attended. Thank you to all the elected officials from the city of Almani that attended. From the Almonte City School District, also from the different offices, Assembly Member or Senator Susan Rubio and also. Lisa Calderon and their representatives. It was nice to see like Mr. Carlos Alcino stated to have the community come and. Join us for that groundbreaking and I know that when we do our ribbon cutting once the work is all completed. It'll be just as amazing. So thank you to Arroyo High School. That's all I have for today. I'd like to now turn it over to Superintendent for his remarks and then we'll go ahead and. Pass it over to Board Member Ruben Carrasco so that I don't forget him.
Thank you, President Padilla.
You're welcome.
In light of releasing our video update through my office yesterday, I won't have any presentation PowerPoint. But if you haven't seen it, it's at Arroyo High School and we had fun with it. So hopefully you got a chance to see it and the community enjoys the updates from December and January, which December was really a nice to see the volunteer work. The wonderful events that went on throughout the community, the honor of some of our employees, but also just what the kids do. Outside of the school day during winter break and help out there volunteer. We wanted to be sure that that was highlighted and thank them for. Their community participation and their civic engagement as well. We also highlighted six Almani Union High School student being named. Quest Bridge Scholars. If you're familiar with Quest Bridge, we have several universities that work. With this nonprofit agency to support underserved communities and students that work hard. They get a full year ride scholarship more worth what two hundred thousand dollars at least that would cover that. My honor to also this young man here is one of the six Ruben Carrasco from South Almani High School who is heading to Stanford. Mountain View High School's Aiden No, Princeton University Ruby Saldivar, Stanford. Those two are for both from Mountain View High School and Arroyo's Karita Nguyen. And also Colin Nguyen for both of them are headed to Notre Dame. And it's also exciting to see from Roadbead High School Eric Diaz, who will stay locally, but a prestigious Pomona College. That he'll be attending there too. And just very exciting to see and very proud of all the students that work so hard. I asked him if he had senioritis already and he kind of said kind of yeah, it's about that time. So I said, yeah, I could relate. I remember those days too when. You're just anxious to kind of ready to move on too, but good luck the rest of the spring semester. We're going to be rooting behind you all the way through. We also wanted to congratulate. At the time we were doing the taping, we learned that Almani. High School's cheer team made it to a competition out in Texas and they did very well. But then they also headed to the national championships in Vegas, which is a very prestigious event called JAMS. They were national champions and they were actually ranked first national champions again on January twenty eighth, which is a few days ago, I think it was Sunday. So shot a good shout out to the Almani High School Lions Cheer Team who worked so hard to get to Vegas and also finish as national champions. So we'd like to recognize both of these outstanding achievements at one of our future board meetings, but we'll invite them to come back down at some point. Okay? Again, the Arroyo High School Track and Field Project, it was a collaborative effort amongst the school staff, the the district support staff from F M O T. But just a wonderful community event, a good feeling without, you know, the rain and just a sunny mountain that we're overlooking. That school beautiful campus that we see. So congratulations and good luck on the adventure of getting that construction done and we'll see you at the ribbon cutting. During the time, the last couple of times that we reported, just a couple of things that I also want to ensure as part of our goals and our mission to. Also focus on safety. Our school research officers are working to present. The critical incident response for our staff. So it's ongoing. At the start of the school year, all the way through and ongoing that our officers speak to our staff about lockdowns, about active shooters on campus. In working through the research of California State University who created a video of a scenario that is not only used by local law enforcement, but even our. Almani PD too, as well as the Sheriff's Department. And that will go on at the other schools too. But Arroyo High School recently had it by Officer Crabtree, the S R O there that was able to do that. I believe that was in late December before we left on winter break. So I want to acknowledge that and thank the. Almani PD as well as the sheriff's for supporting our staff. That's one of the critical points and one of the incentives. That everybody feels it's important to know. This week also starts our U Truth Annual Survey. It opened up and they have about four weeks to complete it. As I mentioned to you always, it's an important survey for students, so that's why we provide the time for our students to complete it on campus. My expectation is that we have at minimum seventy five percent of completers across all schools. And it's almost like a competition among schools, but they do a wonderful job. We've had actually ninety percent. Eighty plus percent every year. So I'm looking forward to another successful year with important data that we can collect. And present to the board at the end of the school year or prior to the start of next year as well as we collect the data back in the late spring. And we also have starting an ongoing Cash for College. As a reminder, we have two in-person workshops. I believe one is happening at Mountain View High School this week and it's for all students of our district. And also it's another feature one that we are coordinating in person for FAFSA and Dream Act workshops too. So. Hoping that parents who are seeing this get to them and accompany their children to completing that required FAFSA now by the state of California or the Dream Act workshop too. That we can assist our students in completing too. Not only that, but also our parents are engaged on the weekends. Over last weekend, I was updated on. A handful of parents at Almani High School who are participating in our PEPS Up workshops. The company that worked closely with our staff to coordinate the requested items from parents that they want to see at workshops too. So thank them as well. Our eighth grade visitations is the highlight of the month because our schools work so hard in providing a welcoming environment to our students that are. A little bit nervous about starting high school. And what a what a good way to get a jumpstart. If you have them on campus and just seeing the high school experience where kids are are in class. They're enjoying nutrition. They're seeing what high school is about so they can get all the jitters out, get out of the way and get that bridge to the summer school and also the fall. So they did assemblies, class visits, informational meetings on clubs and organizations. Lunch transportation was provided by the district at every school site too. So I know our eighth graders look forward to it too. So I want to thank the school site for putting on a good program for eighth grade visitors and the staff from the. Eighth grades too, because they actually they basically critique our schools when they come back and say, you know what? They did a good job or like. You know, I wish they would have done this or we heard the other schools did this too. So I'm hopeful that, you know, their response was also positive too. I do. I would like to highlight a eighth grade visit at Roadbead High School. It is a short little video that was put together by staff at Roadbead High School, but I I not only want to allow the board to see this, but also recognize the work that our staff does to highlight these. Things that happen at schools every day. So this is at Roadbead High School Eighth Grade Visitation Visitation Day. All right, Class of twenty twenty seven. It really makes me feel old. But looking forward to meeting the Class of twenty twenty seven and kudos to Roadbead High School. Great things are happening. At Pantherland too, so very excited to see and very proud. Last but not least, I want to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year. I'm looking forward to Friday's event to meeting our parents, saying hello. And just enjoying the evening for the day starts at five PM here at our district office parking lot. To honor happy the Lunar New Year, I also would like to share a short little video that was put together by one of our teachers. Ms. May Chang. She was one of my former colleagues when I was at South Almani High School. So I have a great relationship with her. So I hope she doesn't mind me sharing this as she shared this with her staff at Roadbead High School. Okay. So we can put that on. We'll close it up with that.
Hi, everyone. Happy Lunar New Year. Hi, everyone. Happy Lunar New Year. For New Years, my family like to gather together and prepare a special feast with some of our favorite foods such as hot pot and seafood. And I also like to bake a New Year's cake called Mian Gao, which is pretty delicious. And after the.
We'll give it one more shot. Is there going to be a video going to show? We could come back to it. Yeah, if you could want to work on, we'll come back to it, but I thought it was a really cool thing that she actually put a little video together at her home. With her actually cultural outfit on and she expressed what she does at with her family, shared a personal story. And really helped us learn more about Lunar New Year and what it means to some of our families and even our staff members too. So again, happy Lunar New Year and I hope everyone has is enjoying the Lunar New Year time right now, which is a lot of festivities happening too. That's it, President.
Thank you.
We find and we'll come back to it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Now I'm going to go on to trustee, Mr. Ruben Carrasco.
Thank you. So we like to highlight the bad, ugly, right? I'm here to highlight the bad. More importantly, you know, as a student rep, I do like to give updates on things that I do see happening in our high schools and something that is notable is. The use of substances in our restroom facilities, right? And I'm pretty sure this this issue is already well known. Maybe sometimes it's discussed less. But it is a problem and it's kind of on two different spectrums. One is the students who, you know, do not engage in substances, right? But enter those facilities.
Hi, everyone. Happy Lunar New Year. For New Years, my family like to gather together and prepare a.
All right. Okay. Well, I've already finished. Student Ruben Carrasco finished and then we'll come back to that. Go ahead, Mr. Carrasco.
Thank you. So there's it's kind of a like two different, one spectrum, two different problems. We have the students who don't necessarily engage in substances, right? But when they walk into those restrooms, they are exposed to the fumes that are produced of them. And you also have the students who are abusing them and, you know, I think the more important issue is the students who are actually using them. And it might not necessarily be about, you know, stopping them or finding hard finding ways to make them stop about about making. Or instead finding ways to make to gradually help their situation. And with that being said, you know, it's not a black and white solution, but I would like to see if the student advisory committee could possibly gain. A little bit of a more involved role if there's any initiatives that are going forward. That way there can be more student input and we can be more collaborative. To see if we can find a way to, you know, at the end, it's not going to be a solution, but it is going to be a gradual improvement. So I would like to see if we can have that more involved role going forward if there's any initiatives already established. Secondly. I would. Okay, so secondly, this is something that I noticed about my classroom specifically and I'm and I know for certain it's an issue as well across all high school sites, but. When I sit in my calculus B C class, there's eight students in there and out of eight students, only one of them is a female. Right? And there is already a known thing that, you know, when it goes up. Up higher in terms of STEM, there are less and less females, right? So similar to Mr. New and highlighted about, you know, there being more Hispanics in the lower math classes, right? There's also maybe a tendency to be lower female a lower female ratio in in STEM classes as well. And I would like to see if we could highlight this issue as well if Mr. Cecil can write a or forward me a statistic. Regarding a gender breakdown of the STEM classes as well as the the liberal arts classes as well, so we can gain some perspective as well as well there too. Lastly, this Friday I will be at the Lunar Year Event and I collaborated with them to organize student volunteers to be there. So, you know, if you guys are there, just give them a quick shout out because there's our students who are taking their Friday evening to show up and, you know, they want to be there, right? So kudos to them and and these are the same students who were there at the holiday drive through event as well. So just shout out to to the students who will be participating at the. Lunar New Year Lunar New Year Event on Friday, but other than that, that's it for me. Thank you. But other than that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, student trustee Ruben Carrasco. So yes, Dr. Zuniga, can you please engage in a discussion with him on ways that we could brainstorm with the Student Advisory Committee of ways that we could stop some of that stuff that's going on in restrooms? Obviously, if Mr. Carrasco is telling us that it's happening at his high school, I'm sure it's happening at other high schools. So it's a discussion that needs to be had. And there, right now, students are part of the problem. They can also be part of the solution, those that are using. The second thing, I do agree that prior to you being here, student trustee Ruben Carrasco, we had Citralic Palacios, which served two terms as a student trustee. And it was a question that kind of put all of us board members in the hot seat, and particularly the Assistant Sup of Educational Services. And that was not only the low number of Latino kids in AP classes, and also the low number of females in AP classes. If we all remember Citralic Palacios, she even did an article. She was part of the newspaper. I don't know if we still have that and can give a copy to Mr. Carrasco, talking about this specific subject. So I'm glad that trustee Ruben Carrasco is bringing that up. And if I recall correctly, you had given us some statistics on that. I recall very distinctly. So let's dust those things off and bring them back up for discussion so that trustee Ruben Carrasco can get that. So thank you for reigniting that and bringing that up. Go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So with that being said, that completes our oral and written communication. We're on seat two, Charlie Two, Student Board Member Communication. We did that. Yep, you got anything else? Mr. Carrasco?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to be moving on to item D, D as in David, Information, Presentations, and Recognition. At this time, we have D1, Presentation by Ripe Distributions on the Affordable Connectivity Program and Free Tablet Program for Students. If you recall, at the last board meeting, Professor Torres de Segris brought this forward and had some actual, the reality and what it looked like. So we have a representative here, so welcome.
Thank you, board. Thank you for listening to us today. We're here to talk about the ACP Program, the Affordable Connectivity Program. What that is was a program that was signed by President Biden last year in January to provide 50 million Americans that are on low-income programs with free internet every single month. So there's two ways to take advantage of that. You can get a subsidy on your monthly internet bill, or you can get a free tablet with a free internet every single month. So the program we're offering to the school district is a unique opportunity for the children that qualify to receive a tablet with free internet service every single month. And we're a direct provider with the ACP Program. We're licensed in 50 states, Puerto Rico, Alaska, and Hawaii. So we're going to donate the actual copay to provide the students with a free tablet. The FCC requirements of the program require that students, that they would normally pay $11 per tablet device. However, we have donors that are willing to cover all the copays for every student that's eligible within a school district. So it provides a unique opportunity where all the students can participate if they qualify for the program. We have a very easy, I think we have a slide up here that we had loaded. I don't know if you guys have it up on board. But on the flyer, there's a QR code links to our website where any parent can just go to the flyer that we provided. And on there, once they fill out their information, they qualify, they receive the tablet shipped to their home within two or three business days. So there's a couple different things that make us unique. Some of our competitors, they don't invest much money into the actual tablet device. We have tablet devices that retail for over $200, $300 in Best Buy and Office Max. The reason we do that is because we want the students and the people using the program to actually be able to use it for things like school, watch movies, connect to the internet. A lot of our competitors are providing devices that are made with very recycled components. Students cannot use them to actually use them for school and things like that. We've invested into high-quality devices because we believe that this program should be served the proper way. A lot of our competitors are taking advantage of the government funds. They're not really providing a service to the community. We're offering a great service with a great product, and we're willing to pay for all the copays for the school, the schoolchildren that qualify for the program. As of right now, we have an offer that we've already presented to you guys. It's a flyer. The tablets come pre-installed with some apps. We're in the process of getting that information to you guys. We're passing around a sample of the device that we use. It's a 10-inch screen Sky device. It has the same specifications as a high-end Samsung model. It's a 2.0 processor with a 4GB RAM, 64GB memory, and a 7400 Mah battery. So this tablet is comparable to an iPad if you look at it spec-wise. Children can actually use it to log on and do their schoolwork. It comes pre-installed with Office 365, so they can use it to use a regular schoolwork they do with those software. Excel, Word, all those things have those capabilities. We have three tablet models. However, the one that we're offering the school board with a copay is this model right here. It's our flagship model. Typical way this program works on our street level is we have vendors that are out at different events, and they're charging consumers who qualify at the street level $50 per device that they receive. That copay is being waived by us to offer the opportunity for children who qualify for the program to be able to get the tablet for free. That's one of the things we're offering to be able to get since you guys. Our donors are willing to provide up to however many tablets. We've seen that based on analysis, your school district may have up to 20,000 students that qualify for this tablet with the free internet. The internet is good for one year. As long as they use one kilobyte a month, they will continue to get internet for the rest of the 12 months. After the 12 months, as long as they're on the program or they still qualify with the benefits, they can reapply and get the free internet for another 12 months. So there's already companies like ours that are doing this across the country in different states. I'll give you an example. Shaquille O'Neal, the sports star, he donated 4,000 tablets to a school in Atlanta. We have other, Kevin Hart, he donated 5,000 tablets to a different school system in Georgia as well. So it's starting to pick up traction. A lot of donors are starting to realize that a good way to provide a benefit for school districts and also give out the free internet program is by paying for the copay. Because the reality is that if these children and parents don't have internet at their house, most likely, they can't afford a $200, $300 tablet. Sometimes they can't afford the free internet every single month. So with this, they can tether to five other devices in their home. So it's not just them using the internet. Other people in their house can also benefit by getting the internet through the device as well. We are going to enhance our plan right now. It comes with 5GB of high-speed data per month. We've already put in plans to get to a 10GB data plan per month. And once they run out of that, obviously, they can call us in. And we're going to provide some type of top-up incentive for school district participants to where if they go over that data, we're going to offer them, if they call in, some type of additional data at no cost. So we're putting those plans together for the backend of it. But as of right now, we definitely can cover all copays for every student that's interested in doing the program, which will provide them with this tablet as long as they qualify. To qualify, they have to be on EBT, school lunch program, Medicaid, Section 8 housing, receive a Pell Grant. Their family has to receive a VA Veterans Pension, or they can qualify based off low income. If it's a single family and they earn less than $38,000 a year combined, they can qualify for the tablet just by providing their tax return. So there's about 10 ways to qualify. The program, myself, our company, has been doing this for 10 years. We came from the Lifeline Free Cell Phone Program background. We've helped hundreds of thousands of consumers qualify for the program and get connected to our services. So for us, this is a really big way where we get a chance to give back through the program by providing a no-copay tablet to students who are eligible. And that's the way we're going to approach it. As you can see, the tablet is very high quality. There's no doubt about it. So it provides a lot of value to the students who do participate.
Okay. Any questions? Board member Florentia Breones?
I had some questions, but thank you. You answered them in the end of your presentation regarding the requirements to, the qualifying requirements. So EBT, VA, free and reduced lunch, Section 8, and you said there are about 10 ways.
Medicaid, school lunch program qualifies them all as well?
Medi-Cal.
Medi-Cal, yes.
And thank you for pointing out that you are allowed to tether devices, other devices to this. I'm not sure if you're aware, but for folks who are here, we provide, we have a one-on-one program where we provide access to our, excuse me, to our students. However, internet access has always been an issue. So I'm happy to hear that those devices could be tethered to this. And, you know, if they don't have internet access at home, then, you know, they'll be able to have it there. The application process, can you walk me through that? How simple is it?
They go to a website. If they've ever signed up for like an Expedia account or Facebook account, they can do it. It's your basic information, last four, social, date of birth. It goes through a thing called the National Verifier. It's a system the government designed to verify these people's eligibility. Once they go through, they get the tablet approved, and our warehouse fulfills it and ships it out to them within two or three business days. Very quick process.
Is there any interaction necessary from our staff? Or is it something that the parents would have to do directly through you?
Directly through the website. So they would have a flyer that'll direct them to our website, and they can just enroll through there. We can offer an incentive also. We're coming up with a way to offer fundraisers to schools that want to participate. There is money that we can provide as a fundraiser as well.
So I guess the question that's really in my mind right now is what role do we play in this? Obviously, parents can go directly to you to sign up.
Really, it's awareness. You know, we'd like the schools to provide the flyers that we print out for you guys and provide them to all the parents. They are eligible for the free tablet as long as they receive one of those government programs. Our company will pay the copay, so they don't have to pay anything out of pocket, and they'll receive the tablet within two or three business days.
When the 12 months ends, they are able to renew for an additional 12 months?
Correct. As long as they still receive one of the benefits that qualify for the program, they can renew the program and receive another 12 months of free internet.
At the conclusion of those essentially 24 months, what happens?
They can continue again. So this program is designed, as long as they qualify for the program, they can renew every single year.
So but that's a federal program, I would assume, is subject to funding?
It is. So the $16 billion is set to run out in the next five years. So we have at least four to five years left of the funding at this pace.
Okay. And this is a program through the FCC, I'm assuming?
It was, it's called the Emergency Broadband Program originally, and then became the Affordable Connectivity Program when it got signed in by Biden. So it started as a different program and evolved to this program.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Board member Salcedo?
Just curious, what would happen if a student is no longer qualifying for, or has any qualifying programs?
So that's a great question. For the first year, as long as they qualified when they applied, they'll have the service for the full year, even if through the year they fall off the qualification.
And let's say two years out, do they, even though they don't qualify anymore, do they still keep the tablet?
Correct. Once that they receive the tablet, the government's providing everybody with a $100 tablet credit. So we're applying that tablet credit. And obviously, we take some costs because these tablets, they're over $200 in retail value. So they keep the tablet forever. There's no cost to them at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Board member Queen Nunean?
No, it's very clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board member Professor Torres de Segris?
I'm sorry? That is our flyer that we'd like to present to all the parents. Because with this flyer, they can go to that QR code or to our website and put in the promo code to receive the free discount. On our website, it charges for these tablets. We have three different prices, but we're going to provide all your students with a promo code that allows them to get them all for free. So that's the main difference.
Yeah. Just to add to that, do you have enough flyers to distribute to all students?
We do. That's why we would need a forecast, but we have capabilities to print out 20,000 or more if we need, absolutely.
Great, great. I know you said 20,000, but if you do your homework, we don't have 20,000 students, just so you know.
I might be in the wrong district. I'm sorry.
Anyways, I would like to allow.
Okay, well then, all of them, yes, I apologize.
Anything else, Professor Torres de Segris? No. Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to student trustee Ruben Carrasco.
Yeah, overall, very great. I mean, I see no flaws so far. I just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Just one issue that I experienced personally is in terms of shipping, right? I know that some families maybe hesitant to ship to their homes due to like, you know, inability of a person to be able to receive the package. Would we be able to sustain like shipping to our school sites for students to pick up the tablet there? Is that something that could be possible?
Absolutely. So we can choose where we're going to ship the tablet device to. If we can choose a school location and we know where those customers are going to be, we can ship them directly to the schools, no problem.
And on behalf of the board, was that something we would like to engage in? Possibly as well, like putting ourselves to the commitment of receiving those packages for the students who do wish their tablets to be sent to their school sites?
I wouldn't see why not. We're trying to do what's best for students.
We could look into how they would be able to streamline that too, to make sure that they get to the appropriate school and the appropriate student.
Correct. So we still have to use the student's activation address. There's two different addresses, but we can use a shipping address as a different address.
Okay. Awesome. And then on, I know you said physical flyers as well, but I'm assuming that digital flyers will be provided as well.
Absolutely, of course.
And that's it for me. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Ruben Carrasco. Question I have, I heard you say when you fill out, you got to put in your social security number? Is that what I heard you say?
The last four of your social.
Last four. Okay. So what do we do with students in a school district that don't have a social security card?
If they have a TIN number, or if the child themselves has it, that'll prove them.
Well, isn't a TIN number for the parents when they file for taxes? So the kid wouldn't have a TIN number?
Oh, so we're talking about if the actual, the kid doesn't have a social number?
Correct. We have many of those students in our district.
I'll have to find out exactly what we can do for you guys, but there is workarounds around the system. The problem is the enrollment system requires it. But we can change that programming-wise.
So that would be something that I would be curious before we jump into this, to make sure that we don't exclude anybody, so that we're inclusive of everybody, all right? The other thing is, who gets this data? Because you're getting our student data. Talk to me about data safety, data breaches. Where does this data go?
I'm the president of Sarver Wireless. We're the actual aggregator. We're an MVNO for T-Mobile. We're licensed by the FCC. We also work with the CPUC. All that data is kept at our headquarters in Rancho Cucamonga. So it's all, we have our own server. We have everything there. So it's all proprietary.
So once you get that data, are you going to bombard our families and students with other products that your company sells or not?
Absolutely not. Yeah. So we cannot retarget this data and market them anything else. Part of the government program is we have to keep it all contained. We don't do an email list. We don't try to cross-market products, anything like that.
Okay. And then if you come to the city of Almani, our district covers a little bit of Temple City, a little bit of all of Almani, South Almani. Who's the carrier that's going to provide the actual, you know, Verizon?
Correct. So we're on the T-Mobile network. We're a mobile virtual network operator. So we're basically a reseller of T-Mobile. So all that coverage is going to be on T-Mobile.
T-Mobile. Okay. All right. And then, there's another question I had. Yeah, this will, many students will be eligible in our school district. We have about, you know, 8,000 students or maybe less. But I would say that about 89% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. And if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, you qualify for Medi-Cal. And if you qualify for Medi-Cal and you qualify for free and reduced lunch, then you qualify for a Pell Grant, all of those things. So that's a very high percentage. So my final question, what is in it for you? Nobody just gives money away and free stuff away. Why are you so interested in our district?
We really do have a giving arm in our company. There is a lot of profit in the government business. But for us, giving back and making a difference for children, if there's a child who doesn't have internet, let's face it, nowadays, they don't have much chance of getting out and learning new things. They don't have much chance of making connections, you know? So it's very difficult for us. Every tablet we give back is a way to give back, not just to the community, but to the youth of what's going on, you know? Our CEO, he's a Christian pastor background. And we have a thing called HopeLine. And we literally dedicate 10% of all of our earnings back to making a difference in the community. So when I brought to him that we're doing this, he told me, take my time and come down here myself. Because if we can prove to you guys the value we're offering by paying the copay, when you do your research, you'll see we really do have the best tablets of all of our competitors. We invested extra money into that. So those are the reasons why we're trying to give back. It provides a tremendous value to everybody that receives the program.
Right. So if you have such a giving arm, then why would we need a fundraiser? Talk to me about, you guys want to do fundraisers. What do we need that money for?
So you know how we, we're waiving the copay right now. Other schools, we have not waived copay in the past. The parents will pay. We'll donate that money to the school as a fundraiser. So we're not raising money. We're giving the money to them as a fundraiser.
Okay, so walk me through this. I'm a parent. I'm like, oh, mira, vamos a tener computadoras nuevas. We've got a tablet free. Boom, I log on, right? I give you my ITIN number. Well, not ITIN number, that's not going to work, I can tell you that. My social security number, my information. It'll be the parent's information or the kid's information?
Depending on whose whose proof you're using to qualify. If the parent's the one that receives the benefit, you're using the parent's information. If only they're qualifying off the school lunch program, it has two spots. You need to put the parent's information and the child's information.
Okay, so let's say I I do all that, right? The information gets to you. Now what happens?
Once you submit the information, it goes to our fulfillment center. We pull the order. We activate the tablet, prepare it to ship out.
On the form, do I have to pay eleven bucks or anything? Are they going to ask me for a credit card? Are they going to ask me for any money?
Just not asking for a credit card. You just go through the process, check out, and then once you check out, we activate it, and it arrives within two or three business days. We use USPS priority.
So on that referral form, if Mr. Ruben Carrasco wants it mailed to South Almani High School, not his home, he'll find that on there?
Absolutely, because it's going to ask you for your your service address, where you're using.
Your home?
Your home, where your proof is attached to, and then also the shipping address can be sent.
And so then wanted, once it arrives physically to Mr. Carrasco, what does Mr. Carrasco or his parents do with that machine? What do they do now?
The tablet comes pre-activated. All they have to do is power it up, and it's already connected to the T-Mobile network, and they can start using it immediately. Comes with an instruction pamphlet and a charger, and also a protective case.
And five gigabytes today for young people, since you have experience, you've gone to other school districts, other high school districts?
It's low. So that's why we're trying to increase it to ten. We'll have that done within the next, I think, two months. We have to get rid of the SIM cards we currently have, and we're going to.
So based on your experience with five gigabytes, how fast does a teenager like Mr. Carrasco use it? Because they're on that stuff all the time.
Reality is, if they use it right away, they can blow through it in two days, you know? But that's why we're going to enhance it. We're already coming up with ways where they can call into our center, and we'll add data for them for this program, so.
So once Mr. Carrasco uses it, you know, on February one and February two, then he has no service from February third to the twenty-eighth?
Correct. It's only Wi-Fi enabled at that point. Once they're out of data, they're out of data.
Okay, unless that their house has their own Wi-Fi or they're at a Starbucks or something like that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, and then the fee for using the service through T-Mobile, how much is that fee that T-Mobile is charging?
So that's completely paid for by the government funds. There's no bill every month for the customer. It's completely free.
Okay, so how much is the government going to give you per each one of my kids, and how much are you going to pay T-Mobile? That's the part I wanted to get to.
So if you look at it, they reimburse us only a hundred and thirty dollars for every customer we acquire. We pay eighty dollars for the tablet at a wholesale rate. We pay twenty-five dollars for the data rate that we that we get at this plan. Once we have more consumers or subscribers, they'll lower our data rate. So really, the profit margin that you're talking about is not very high for our company. We might keep five to ten dollars per device as a company. We still have massive overhead.
So the answer to my question is, you're going to keep five to ten dollars for each one of my kids?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Dr. Zuniga, are we looking to give some direction on this, or what would you like?
No, I think the next steps I recommend that we uh we had our initial meeting, a conference call, and uh we will follow up with another uh probably face-to-face meeting calls to see how. I see this more like a metro pass promotion, that we would create a a campaign to promote this event, to encourage our community, uh our school sites to work with their liaisons, to reach out to parents for us. Campaign it through social media that this is, this event is happening, is available for all students who qualify. We'll help you get through it and answer any questions, because they trust schools more than companies, so that's our conduit to help our parents get through this process, because it does require probably parent engagement to make sure this is completed. One of the other things that I did actually have in mind is that, do you have any um flyers that have different languages, or is it something that we would need to do?
Correct. We can create it in Spanish or whatever language you guys desire as well.
Okay, yeah, we definitely would like some of those as well.
What about the registration form? Can you make that into several languages?
It's only in Spanish now, but we're working on creating it to several languages.
Okay, yeah, because we have, if if you do your homework, you'll know that there's twenty-four percent uh um, well, that's English language learners, but we know we have about twenty-four percent Asian.
Okay, we'll make sure we reduce.
Vietnamese and uh and Chinese. Oh, yeah, so just to let you know.
Definitely.
Okay, so uh uh do you want some direction to continue, Dr. Zuniga?
I have his contact, so we will definitely communicate in the next couple of days, so we can set a time up, so we can plan for what we can do to provide this to our students.
And then you're going to bring this back, or you want to know if you want to move forward?
We might have to look at a potential agreement to see what the terms are with regards to student information being shared. And that's something that would uh consider as a memorandum of understanding, uh an agreement, to see if the board is interested in that agreement, and then go from there. I think if student information is being shared, we may want to take a careful look about how that impacts our students.
Well, look, we'll go ahead and answer the question for you, because I don't want you to go do a memorandum of understanding and all that if you don't have direction from the board. So Board Member Salcido, how do you feel about this program?
Yes.
Okay, Professor Torres de Seigres? Uh, Board Member Florencio Briones?
Nope, I'm good with it.
You're good with it. Uh Qui Nguyen?
Hundred percent, yes.
Okay, I'm a hundred percent, yes. So you have direction to continue and make this happen, okay? Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, yeah. I know I had you on the hot seat, but um you answered well, so you convinced the board. Excellent job, okay? All right, moving right along, we're going to move on on the agenda for today, uh February first, Wednesday, February first. We're on item E, E for Ernesto, Consent Agenda. Are there any items that uh uh I'll start off with Mr. Carlos Alcedo?
No questions.
No questions. Uh, Mr. Florencio Briones?
Uh, no items for consent.
No items for consent. Uh, Mr. Qui Nguyen?
No, no items.
None, thank you very much. Professor Torres de Seigres, Consent Agenda? Okay, number two, all right? Excellent. Okay, we'll go ahead and look at number two. Number two reads as follows: Consider approval of Amendment Number One between Elmani Union High School District and the Anaheim Group to continue to provide Inspector of Record Services for Phase Two of the School Bus Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Project at Mountview High School. You have the floor, Professor Torres de Seigres?
Yes, that's the responsibility that we have to provide in order for us to have those on site, that the inspection does uh pass and that we, the work that is being done is done accurately, to ensure that safeties become, it it is our number priority, making sure what those vehicles are there, especially our bus vehicles, are charging appropriately according to the state law and what's required of it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, thank you very much. And that was, that's my only question, because I kind of worry about these machines. I hope that they they are in our in our in our grounds, and we are responsible, especially when we have our students around them. Thank you very much. That's the my question.
That's a great question that Professor Torres de Seigres is bringing up. I know this, these are the chargers to the electrical vehicles, and I saw a news report last night of how difficult it is to put out the fire on electrical vehicles because of the batteries and just the amount of water that it takes for firefighters to put these out. They showed so many cases, and it's becoming a big issue when when uh electric vehicles crash. So if those are the charging stations, you know, safety is definitely something that we need. So, all right, um, on the consent agenda, can I get a, can I, can I, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
By uh Board Member Florencio Briones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Torres de Seigres. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Now, uh, we're going to move on to item F on the regular agenda for today, Wednesday, uh, February first. The first item on the agenda is number one, Discussion and Direction. Um, you know what? Let me, let me back up. I want to back up. Um, there was a, um, I forgot to ask an item, so legal counsel, I need to go back, so how do I do this? I want to go back to the um. I went around to everybody, but I excluded myself on the consent agenda. No, I want to um approve the Personnel Action Reform uh Report, but there's an item that I would like to pull. So how do I go back and do that? Talk to the mic, because I can't hear you.
You can ask for a motion to go back to the consent agenda and pull that item.
So I make a motion to go back to number twelve, Consider Approval of District Personnel Action. Can I get a second to be able to go back and do that?
I second.
Okay, I have a second for Mr. Qui Nguyen. All in favor of allowing me to go back uh to have uh talk about number twelve, say aye. I'll go start with Mr. Salcido.
That's fine.
Fine. Uh, Professor Torres de Seigres?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Briones?
No.
No, okay, and I'm a yes, so it's a four-one. Uh, the motion passes. So going back to item twelve of uh Wednesday, February first, uh, item E, Consent Agenda, number twelve. I would like to move to approve the uh District Personnel Action uh Report with the exception of PSR number twelve seventy-eight, position two-two-one-zero-two-four, job class zero-eight-seven-zero-five-five, work location zero-two-zero-zero-zero at Rosemead High School. Um, I would like to not approve that item. Can I get a second?
I second.
Some discussion?
Okay, we got a second on the floor. Discussion. Go ahead, uh, Mr. Salcedo.
So what's the reasoning behind this?
Um, there were some phone calls that uh that I received of some things that were said, and uh I would like to have a discussion with uh uh Mr. Uh, with Dr. Edward Zuniga regarding this and uh have him communicate that to the rest of the board.
Shouldn't we have done this in closed session?
Um, that item is not, uh, it wasn't put on the consent agenda. I mean, on the um closed session agenda.
He's leery about discussing these kind of personnel issues in open session.
Yeah, this should definitely be in closed session. I mean, my recommendation is if you want to pull an item for dis- for discussion from the personnel report, when you set the agenda, put it on the closed session um agenda to discuss there, so that we do it in closed session before we take action out here. Uh, because we definitely should not be discussing personnel matters uh in open session.
Thank you. So I heard a a Board Member, Carlos Alcedo. I've already heard um Mr. Um Briones. But the motion's still on the floor. There was a first and a second. I made the motion. Mr. Qui seconded.
Can you repeat that motion? Sorry, I wanted to.
Yes, the motion is to approve all Personnel Action Items with the exception of what I already read and is on record. And at this point, I would like to call for the vote.
Sorry, really quick. Uh, did you want to table this item or or?
Yeah, I want to pull that item and not approve it.
Okay, but do you want to table it for discussion?
No, I want to pull it to talk to Ms. to Dr. Zuniga about that. That's my motion on the floor.
I think he wants to remove that specific item from the personnel report in tonight's meeting.
Yes. Okay?
Just to be clear, we're not telling this individual that they're not hired, so much as we're telling them that this item has been tabled for discussion at a future meeting, at which point it may be brought back for consideration. That's what I'm asking.
I I'll repeat it. I I want to have a discussion with Dr. Zuniga about this, and uh that what I say.
No, I I get that. I just want to make sure that it's, that the motion is clear.
Yes.
So you want to table this item. You want to approve the Personnel Report with the exception of this item. What I'm asking is, in that motion, are you tabling this item to discuss with staff?
No, I'm tabling, I'm I'm not, I don't want to approve that, just that part.
Right now, I understand that, but because you want to talk to staff regarding this particular position or individual.
No, because I want to talk to Dr. Zuniga about this.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Um, but as part of that discussion, that should involve the rest of us too in closed session, so that we all have this discussion with our staff regarding concerns that may have been brought up.
Yeah, that that's your motion. That's not my motion. I've already uh told you what I want. I want to discuss this.
Your motion isn't clear, though. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I'll repeat it again. I'll repeat it one more time.
No, I know you're repeating it, but it's not clear what you want to do with this position. Are you just not approving it?
Yes, not approving it.
So, okay, so then there's really no discussion with staff, because you're just not approving this position. You're going to force people to have to reapply. That's what I'm doing.
I'll repeat my motion. Number twelve, okay? Move to approve all of the Personnel Action Forms with the exception of that position. That is my um motion on the floor.
So just because.
But you're not asking to vote no on that item. You're just asking to take it off the Personnel Report.
I am voting to not approve that.
Okay, so I'm gonna, because I have concerns about this, I'm going to make a substitute motion that the Personnel Approve, the Personnel Report be approved or adopted with the exclusion of that particular position, two-two-one-zero-two-four, to table that item to closed session at the next meeting for discussion and consideration then. Because if you have questions about a particular individual who who is recommended for hiring or promotion, we should have that that discussion and understand what the concerns are before we say yea or nay. That's that's.
Okay, fair enough, then. We'll go ahead and uh approve all of the Personnel Action, uh, and we will table that and bring it into closed session, okay? Can I get a second for that motion?
I second.
Okay, um, any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, so let's uh call for the vote. Mr. Salcedo? Uh, Professor Torres de Seigres?
Aye.
Mr. Briones?
Aye.
Mr. Qui Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Padiaman, aye. Okay, five-zero. Thank you. All right, next item. We're moving on to item F, Regular Agenda for today, uh, February first, Wednesday, two thousand twenty-three. Um, I'll go ahead and start off with Board Member Salcedo.
I don't have any comments just yet. So I'll pass for now.
Okay, so uh Board Member Florencio Briones?
I'm not really clear on what the purpose of this discussion is, so I would defer to you to set the discussion in motion before I ask any questions or make any comments.
Okay, uh, Mr. Qui Nguyen?
Yes, I have, like I say, today, I spent two hours from restroom to classroom. So, you know, I talked to, you know, the student, the par educator, and the teacher, and the director, Ms. Bell. Definitely, they deserve much more, much more better. We need a direction so we can serve them better, and I mean, I cannot promise anything. I only want vote. So, you know, while I'm still a board member, you know, these those students cannot be forgotten. They have to be taken care of. And that's all I can say. Whatever we do, we need to brainstorm together, from the superintendent to all of us. Do the right thing. Make them, you know, better. That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Qui Nguyen. Uh, Board Member Professor Torres de Seigres?
Yes, I have a, I have to talk about this, because the students that are in the in this program, the transitory uh students, the um these students are as important as the students who are going to go to PCC. All my students for me are the same, all the students, absolutely. And I don't know, but here is not uh Mrs. Mrs. Bell or one of the teachers in this program. Before the pandemic, I was very involved with your program. She remembers that I used to bring from the garden club seeds, and we were talking with the with the with the teachers, trying to know what do they need. Garden club tried to help them in everything. Some of the teachers went to our garden club, and they talk about uh about about what they needed. And one of the things that they told us is that they needed to have some big space for our students to walk, for our students, green stuff. And they wanted to have some trees. Of course, that at that time, at the, and that place in Granada, it was impossible to have it. But we were planning in the garden club from the friendly garden garden club of El Monte that still we are trying to revive and almost disappear with the pandemic, but we promised that we were going to try to bring some uh trees from Calpoli. They wanted to have orange and lemon trees. I don't know, but we couldn't finish doing that because the pandemic came and we didn't do it. My students are very important, and board members, cabinet, and public. I believe I may have found a wonderful solution for relocating our transitional program to a site that is appropriate and far superior to the needs that the Rosemead campus would be. I have done considerably research and have reviewed a number of wonderful sites appropriate for the needs of our transition students. All these sites are single-story, which is very important for them. With many classrooms, ample parking, and auditorium for meetings. You were complaining about that, that our students in the transition program, they don't have it. Well, this place, they have the for meetings, the internet, air conditioning, and wide open space for gardening and recreation. That is the place that always they were talking about. Our Rosemead site is a two-story building with only large alf aspect, asphalt parking lots, and no wide open spice, space. There is absolutely no area whatsoever for any gardening. Also, there is no auditorium for meetings. Our transition students deserve a better place, but the place that it has to be open, and they need to have green stuff. I think I can have some. Finally, let me remind everyone that the Rosemead Center was closed due to the lack of enrollment. When least, it brings in much-needed revenue to our district, nearly eight hundred da- eight hundred thousand dollars a year. We need the money. The Rosemead Center is far from El Monte. The sites I have found are in El Monte. Let me tell you, unfortunately, I've been working hard, I have, I work, and I have family, and I couldn't do some take pictures and put it here for you to see. But if you see, everybody can see. Have you visited the center in Rosemead? It's really very, very, no, very, not very good for our students. It has, doesn't have any garden, only this part. It has also, you see that, the parking lot. And also, doesn't have any space, and the rooms are very small. They have two store, two store, uh, um, two stores that you have to go in the eh, the elevator to go upstairs.
I'm sorry, public, please be. I'm sorry, public, please be respectful. We allowed for the public comment and didn't interrupt.
It took me a long time, believe me.
Please be respectful.
Believe me, it took a long time for me because I want to let you know that, yes, I care for those students. And I take a lot. And they know that it is the truth because I've been working with them for a long time. All the time that I've been in the Voto Tristis, I helped. And I visited the program. I don't know, Ms. Bell is not here, but she knows that I've been there. When I came this time, came back because I live and unfortunately, I work, I have a family, I have many things to do. And I'm the only one who makes my, when I run, I have to do everything by myself. Then I don't, I don't win, I lost. But I don't care. Because for me, my purpose is to help my students. And I come back here. Well, the places that I was thinking is, the first one is in the Jeff Seymour Center, formerly Mohawk School Elementary School. This close school has plenty of classrooms and auditorium and wide open spaces with ample parking and room for gardening. And the most important, that I talked with Dr. Zuniga, because I remember when Mr. Salerno asked me, we rented the Norwood Elementary School. I remember our district once used this school for our transition program. Mrs. Bell took classes there. Program and we paid $250,000 fee for refinish the school. This is a site has ample parking, air conditioning, a large auditorium and many classrooms with plenty of open outdoor spaces for planting garden. Here is the one that I could, last night I was going to send these pictures that I want you to see. You need to go to visit this place. It has a lot of green parts. The school is really big. It has a lot of space for our students. You can see this. And if somebody wants to have and to see these pictures, unfortunately, I couldn't send these pictures. And it has also a big parking lot. This Norwood school is here. It's in the city. It's inside of the city. And the one that we have in Rosemead, we have two big avenues. Rosemead Avenue, which is really dangerous. Do you see how the cars go? And we have a lot of parts that are no good for our students. Then, in Mountain View Elementary District, they have four closed schools with air conditioning. I know that because I've been visiting them. I didn't do all my job that I wanted to do for my school, for my studies that I do for the school board and bring reports. Because I was studying this. We have, and we have, as I told you, in Mountain View, we have, those schools have internet. All of these four schools have ample parking, many classrooms and wide open outdoor spaces for gardening. Those schools are, A, Madrid Middle School, Crans Middle School, Borges, I know that one. I know that one. It's a beautiful, big, with a big, big place where our students can go and when they walk and they can have air conditioning and all the things that they need for having a good, a good place to study. Cogswell Elementary School. I recommend that all of us, board members, our superintendent, his cabinet and accompany our transition school staff, the families and transition students to go and visit closed campuses and see them. I believe they are far more appropriate for our transition school students. They do deserve a better facility. And those students are very important for me. Even the students with disabilities, with students with no disabilities are very important for me. And that's the reason that I fight for them. The least money from our Rosemead campus could easily fund a list of any of these schools. All these schools are closer than the Rosemead Center. Our legal counsel can check for us regarding the California Government Code requirements for use of these closed schools. These are closed schools that they can serve to our students very well. That's my recommendation. I've been doing all of this and yes, yes, and yes, I take care of my students. And the most important part is that we can do it right now. We don't have to wait. A year and a half, Dr. Zuniga, for rebuilding, if we were going to have the center in Rosemead, it was going to take a year and a half to rebuilding that and have it ready for them. And then our poor students was going to, were going to be for a year and a half in the same place. Right now, if we can do it, we investigate this place, we can have our students there. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Board Member Professor Torres de Seigres. For me, special education is based upon two core tenets, okay? For our students with disabilities. The first tenet is that every child with a disability has the right to what we call a free and appropriate public education, better known as FAP. Second tenet is that students with disabilities should be given instruction in the least restrictive environment known as the LRE, which is to say that students with disabilities should be educated alongside their non-disabled peers in the greatest extent possible. This LRE, or least restrictive environment placement, is stipulated in federal law. Individuals with Disability Education Act, better known as IDEA or IDEA. The law states that student placement should maximize opportunities for students to interact with their peers without disabilities. The purpose of the Adult Transition Program, or ATP, the Adult Transition Program serves special education students who have completed their high school program but have not earned a high school diploma and are on a certificate of completion course of study. These young adult students remain eligible to receive special education services from our school district up until the age of 22 or upon receipt of their high school diploma. Whichever comes first, at an ATP or an Adult Transition Program, these young adults' education focuses on developing independent, social, vocational and other adaptive skills that prepare them to work and live purposefully and productively. The history of the Adult Transition Program, or ATP, the Granada. In 1999, one class was established as a regional program offering a certificate of completion program at the Granada site, or ATP, 1999. In 2004, a second transition teacher was hired to serve the second class at Granada. In 2006, the Adult Transition Program moved from the Titan Center, which is near Almani High School, not on the Almani High School campus, but near Almani High School, to rooms. In 2007, a third class was added to the Titan Center, or the Adult Transition Program. In 2008, a fourth class was added at the Titan Center. In 2009, the ATP Program returned to the Granada site. There were now four rooms that got relocated. Approximately 50 students at that time. In 2013, LACO, the Los Angeles County Office of Education, did a program transfer that was effective on August 1st. And there were approximately 100 students that LACO sent back to us. 50 of those students were not adults. They were minors, so they went to regular high schools. But the other 50 were adult students. So now, we had about 100 students. There were the four new added classes at the Adult Transition Program. In addition to the 48 new students that previously were attended the LACO programs, the Los Angeles County Office of Education used to run some of these programs. But like I said, in 2013, they gave us those students back and they said, you guys need to now educate those students. Expanding to serve students with moderate to severe developmental disabilities. That's what we took on when we took those children back from LACO. The projected enrollment for the 2013-2014 school year was about 100 students, okay? We had, we had about 50. LACO sent about 100 back, but out of those 100, only 50 were adults. So the others went to regular special needs programs at other high schools. So we went from, we went from one room to two rooms to three rooms to four rooms in the Adult Transition Program. And it has always moved around site by site based on the necessity. In 2013, LACO returned its moderate to severe programs back to the SALPA. Back to the SALPA member districts. There are 14 districts in the West San Gabriel Valley SALPA. That's who we belong to in the SALPA. And they control all of the districts and give direction and support to all of our districts. Like I said, there are 14 school districts, okay? Out of those 14 school districts, some of them are elementary school districts. And we were one of the high school districts. Six districts were kinder through eighth grade. And then eight districts were high school districts, okay? Remember that. Eight were high school districts and then six were kinder through eighth grade. It now fell on the individual district to provide services to their district students. When LACO gave the students back, it wasn't just for Almani Union High School District. It was for all 14 school districts that had to now figure out how they were going to educate their students that belonged to them. LACO returned more than 100 students back to Almani Union High School District. And many of these students needed immediate placement. The dire need for immediate placement was the reason we have the Granada Center as we do today. Other SALPA member districts offer their own Adult Transition Program at their local high schools, okay? And I did do my research as well, like Professor Torres de Seigres. I want to know, how do the neighboring school districts handle their most at-promised students? Like, what do they do? You know, do they segregate them in a parking lot? Like Almani Union High School District does? Well, I'll tell you. These are all the districts and I'll tell you what each one does, okay? In the Arcadia Unified School District, the ATP Program, where is it? Is it in a parking lot? No, it's located at Arcadia High School on the main campus. And they also use the Bonita Continuation High School. That's where their at-promised students are housed. In Monrovia, where do they have their Adult Transition Program or ATP Program? They have it at Monrovia High School with the regular education so that they can interact. In the Duarte Unified School District, where is their Adult Transition Program or their ATP Program located? The answer is at Duarte High School. In the San Gabriel Unified School District, where do they house their Adult Transition Program? With students that fall under IDEA and have IEPs? They have theirs at the Delmar Continuation High School. That's where they house them. In San Marino, also a district close by, where do they house their Adult Transition Programs to provide a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, or LRE, or FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education? The answer is at San Marino High School. What does South Pasadena Unified School District do? Where do they have their students? In a parking lot? The ATP Program is housed at South Pasadena High School. What about Temple City, real close to us, over here by Rosemead High School? Where do they house their Adult Transition Program? In a parking lot? No, they house them at Temple City High School. And those are the districts in the SALPA that we belong to. Now, what are the benefits of integration for special needs children? Integration is my key word. Not segregation in a parking lot all by themselves where they never get to see students without disabilities. We don't live in that type of community. We don't have like a disabled city only of Almani residents or a disabled city of Arcadia students all, you know, in one spot. That's not a true society. That's not how society works. We want to be inclusive of all of our students. So what are the benefits of integrating special needs child into with regular students that don't have disabilities? A student with a disability is a valued member of the classroom and school community. And like my colleague, Mr. Qui Nguyen said, we must do better. And I agree with Board Member Qui Nguyen that we must do better. And I agree with everybody on here, on this dais, that we all feel that we owe it to special needs students to do better. I agree with that 110%. And I heard it loud and clear from elected officials from other cities that were in support of Pasadena City College. They also told us, do better for those kids. And I agree with them 110%. Integrated settings provide a challenging environment for students with disabilities. Therefore, these students learn to be more independent and acquire developmentally advanced skills. Also, they may develop friendships and a more positive self-image by having the opportunity to do what other students do. Equally important are benefits provided for students without disabilities in a multitude of ways as listed below. I'm a 30-year educator and I work at sites that have a lot of special needs students and general ed students. Great site is Rio Vista Elementary School. Another site was at New Lexington School when we had county classes with students with disabilities. And I saw them interacting with students without disabilities. And it was a win-win for both populations. Integration works. The children in special needs, with special needs and students of regular ed also experience diversity of society on a small scale at school. They also develop an appreciation that everyone has unique characteristics and abilities. I've even been in assemblies and ran assemblies where we would do student of the months or when we would have the county classes come. And in the beginning, yeah, it takes a while for our students without disabilities to get used to some of the behaviors of students with disabilities. And that's just something that they had to do. With time, it just became normal for someone to scream or yell or get up or come in front when they're giving the awards or when somebody's taking a picture. We get used to that. Regular ed students can get used to that. And special needs students get used to regular ed and they integrate very nicely. And again, I've been in education for 30 years and I'm currently at sites where we have, you know, autism, all the different diagnoses that we have for special education. I see the benefits. No one tells me about it. I live it every day. I go to that site, you know, every week. Also, the benefits is that they develop respect for others with diverse characteristics and sensitivity towards others' limitations. They develop empathetic skills and enhances appreciation for diversity of human family. And that's what students without disabilities get out of it. So again, I've told you that what the rest of our high schools do, they don't segregate them in a parking lot. I heard the parents loud and clear. You guys told me that the classrooms shake. They tremble when semi-trucks drive by. There are critters underneath the classrooms in the bungalows. There is no privacy for students to be seen by the nurse. Some parents had to buy hiking boots for their children because when it recently rained, the puddles were so deep and so big. I heard every comment that was said. And I felt bad and I wrote everything down. I listened. And during the summer, the asphalt gets so hot for the kids and the heat radiates off the ground. And it's not healthy because it's a parking lot. There's no appropriate place for them to eat. There's no appropriate place for them to eat their lunch. And then when it rains, it's cold. There's no cafeteria. I heard you. When it rains, it's cold for them to eat outside. There's no true kitchen at that parking lot. There are issues at the site that are not ADA compliant. I heard that. American with Disabilities Act, ADA compliant. It's difficult for wheelchairs to navigate around the campus, especially if they want to go into the main office. There's no ramp. There's also no adequate green space like Professor Torres de Seigres talked about. Just asphalt because it's a parking lot. Students deserve better. They are our most at-promised students. The HVAC and heating systems are no good. I heard that also. The changing stations that, you need changing stations because there are students that require to be changed. This was supposed to be a temporary facility. I heard that. Previous boards didn't fix that. This board is intending to fix it. We will fix it. And yes, you can stomp that because I agree with everything it says on there. Students with wheelchairs do not have access to the main office. I said that because there's no ramp. Not enough shaded area, leaky roofs in the classrooms, concerns of hot water. It's an inhumane place. I heard all the public comment loud and clear. I even had to table the Arroyo presentation because I did not want to cut any of the public comment off. And they were upset with me, and it was okay. We needed to hear you. And I read every communication written, and I allowed for every oral communication to take place. And I want you to know that as the board president, I heard you loud and clear. So what I would like to propose, I don't know if after I've read this or stated this, Mr. Breones, is there anything you'd like to say?
Oh, there's so much I want to say.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Breones.
I'd like to make comments too.
Sure, no problem.
Mr. Salcedo, I don't know if you want to go first or?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Well, no, I'm giving the floor to Mr. Breones. I'm the board president, so.
I'm ceding my time to Mr. Salcedo. I will go after him. Thank you.
Okay, I am the board president. I'm giving you the floor, Mr. Breones.
I don't care. I am ceding my time to Mr. Salcedo. Thank you, and I will go after him.
Thank you. So just at first, I honestly, I maybe I should have asked this of Dr. Zuniga. When we spoke yesterday, I thought the discussion was going to be led by the district team. And so I thought there was going to be some information or presentation provided. However, I mean, there's a lot of evidence, a lot of good things, I guess, said by both. Right? I mean, mainstreaming is very valuable and, and with, for special ed students.
I didn't say mainstreaming though. I said integration. So if you're going to say that, use the word I used.
Thank you, Mr. Pia. And, and a lot of good information from Mrs. Salador de Seigres. I still remain that Ramona, sorry, the Rosemead project would have been the best for our students. But I guess we're past that now. You know, looking into other districts' properties, okay? Gets really complicated. I mean, it, it's not our property, you know? And, and the longer we delay, a, a better site for our kids, the more detrimental it becomes, the more of a travesty it becomes. And, and just, Dr. Zuniga, just indulge me real quick. How many high schools does Arcadia Unified have?
They have one high school.
One, okay. So they go there. How many high schools does Temple City have?
I think they also have one as well, Temple City High School.
How many high schools does Duarte Unified have?
One comprehensive high school.
So we have five. Okay? So our numbers are much larger. Okay, of course, Arcadia is going to send their kids to Arcadia High School. They have one high school. You know, same with Temple City, same with the others. Okay, so there's problems there too. I get it. What I really want to see, okay? Because when, when we first decided on the Rosemead Center, there was a feasibility study done by the district. Okay? And it helped us make the right decision. Okay? I, I firmly believe that we need to go back to that again to see what's available within our school district. Okay? A feasibility study to see how we can move forward quickly to help these students. It, it's not going to be by a single board member or two making visits and this and that. I get it. They want to do their homework, and I really do applaud that. I go, but what we do need is FMOT involved. We need ed services involved. We need our superintendent involved. And put just all hands on deck and create a feasibility study on how we can move forward most efficiently and quickly. Those are my comments.
Thank you, board president. I'm sorry, I made you a president already again. Thank you, Board Member, Mr. Breones, Board Member Florencio Breones.
Wow, so this fun topic continues again. Members of the, the audience, our special ed parents who are here today, thank you for sticking with us. You've heard a very long, yet quite inaccurate history of our Adult Transition Center in the district by our very own George Santos. The condescension dripping from that statement and comments made to members of the audience. Boy, I don't even know where to begin. Let me just say this. I want to echo something Mr. Salcedo said about assuming that this conversation, this discussion was going to be led by our, our own staff. Because that's the way to do it. And guess what? That's exactly what we did back in 2019. After we passed our bond, Measure HS, our district hired a consulting team to put together a master facilities plan. They visited every one of our campuses and took stock of classrooms, open space, parking lots, offices, multipurpose rooms, auditoriums, everything. I want to say thank you to Mr. Redia for providing this because this is a very concise and comprehensive timeline of how we got to today. May 6, 2020, the Board of Trustees by a 5 to 0 vote awarded the agreement, an agreement to DLR Group to assess the Granada Transition Center and provide recommendations for facility enhancement or replacement. We literally paid a company to go and assess the site and tell us, hey, what would work there, what wouldn't? What options do we have? Because that's the way to do it. October 7, 2020, DLR Group presented their feasibility report recommending the adult, the Rosemead Adult Education Center be selected as the permanent site for the adult transition program. This recommendation was tabled at the direction of the board to allow for additional outreach to stakeholders and board discussion. Now, in 2020, while this took place, I was board president. And out of deference to my colleague, Mr. Padilla, who asked for this item to be tabled, I said, okay, let's get additional input from community members. So we did. As a result, on November 4, 2020, the Board of Trustees by a 5 to 0 vote approved Amendment Number 1 to increase DLR Group's original contract amount for the assessment of the Adult Transition Center by an additional $9,280. The amendment included the following services. Number one, prepare and facilitate two community stakeholder meetings with members identified by the district. Number two, attend a site visit with the Board of Trustees. And number three, prepare and present final board presentation with the findings and recommendations. On November 17, 2020, and again on January 26, 2021, stakeholder workshops took place. However, the recommendation was the same. Rosemead Adult Education Center is the most cost-effective and reasonable option for the adult transition program. Mr. Padilla asked for additional input from community members and stakeholders. We said, sure, let's table this item for a little bit, give them the opportunity to provide more input. And the results came back the same. The Rosemead site was still the best option. On April 14, 2021, the board by a vote of 40, 4 to 1, with trustee Padilla voting no, directed staff to begin the planning and design efforts for the West San Gabriel Valley Adult Education Complex at the existing adult education site in Rosemead. Allow staff to enter into negotiations with Pasadena City College to partner with the Almani Union High School District in the development of the West San Gabriel Valley Adult Education Complex. Now, this vote, 4 to 1, is really important because by this point, Mrs. Torres de Seigres was now on the board. Did she share any information about other sites that are, that are vacant by other school districts? Did she express any concern about us moving to the Rosemead campus? No. She voted to give direction to staff. On May 5, 2021, the board by a vote of 41, 4 to 1, with trustee Padilla voting no, awarded an agreement to DLR Group in the amount of $1,427,872 to provide architectural and engineering services for the adult regional education complex at the Rosemead Adult School Center. Again, Mrs. Torres de Seigres was on the board. Did she vote no? Did she express any concerns? Did she bring up any, as she says, options? No, gave direction to staff, move forward. On June 23, 2021, the board by a vote of 5-0 approved a two-year lease agreement with Pasadena Area Community College District. The lease agreement is effective July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023. The term of this agreement was not to be extended. This was us being generous to PCC. We didn't have to enter into a lease agreement with them. In fact, we probably shouldn't have because we had already told them when their lease was going to end. We should have given direction back in 2020, maybe at the latest 2021, to begin design and engineering for this new facility. Because guess what? The assertions that Mr. Padilla has made tonight that, you know, this was a temporary solution and students should not be in parking lots today. Well, guess what? If we had done this back in 2020, they would not be in parking lots today. They would be in a brand-new, modern, permanent facility. But we were generous to PCC. And we said, you can stay there for additional time because we're going to take some time to work through this. Following the approval of contracts, DLR Group began the schematic design process and design development process, holding meetings and sending progress updates to both the Adult Transition Center team and adult education team. Additionally, the team met with the Director of FMOT to present each material option for each space to ensure longevity, ease of maintenance, aesthetics and design intent. Finally, the construction document phase. The team moved forward with, with producing the construction documents and submitting the project to the Division of the State Architect, or DSA. DSA accepted the submittal on November 21, 2022, with DSA approval expected in April or May of 2023. And as Mrs. Redia stated earlier in her public comment, all these activities have brought this project to the cusp of the construction phase scheduled to begin July 2023. However, as all of you here tonight remember, just a few weeks ago, on July 18, 2023, three members of this board, trustee Padilla, trustee Torres de Seigres, and trustee Nguyen, all voted to direct staff to cancel that contract with DLR Group. The assertions that Mr. Padilla made that we consented our students back to our high schools, and the comparisons, comparisons that he made to other school districts do not pan out. As has already been shared by Dr. Zuniga, the school districts that Mr. Padilla uses examples have all, but only one high school within their district. We have five. We operate a very large special ed program. We operate a very large adult transition program. A program that other school districts will come to to see best practices. I don't know if there's an official designation, recognition as a model program, but it's definitely something that other programs aspire to. I get the feeling that, as happened last meeting on the 18th, that this is already a foregone conclusion. It's interesting that Mrs. Torres de Seigres made comments about the facilities that she thinks we should move into, Norwood School, Voorhees, Madrid, because her husband made those same exact statements at the Almani City Council meeting last week. In fact, I was there to answer questions from the council members as an individual. And one of the things that I had to point out is we don't own those properties. Why would we pay additional money out of our own funds to another school district to rent their properties when we own a property that should be used for our students? That we had already had plans to use for our students? That we had already given direction to staff? That we had entered into contracts worth more than $1 million? It makes absolutely no sense for anyone to say, just move into another property. The Jeff Seymour Center is, it is not appropriate for our students. The Jeff Seymour Center has many other programs already going on there. It is not the appropriate site for our students. Norwood School is not the appropriate site for our students. More specifically because we don't even own it. You know, we haven't even talked to any of those districts to see if they would even be interested. What are their plans? Because guess what? Again, PCC sent this letter asking us to reconsider their lease without asking us what are our plans, even though they knew that their lease was ending simply because one board member took it upon herself to go to the president superintendent and tell her, hey, you have a new board? Submit a letter, and you'll get what you want. Mountain View School District, they have their own board. What, you expect we're going to go to them and say, hey, we want to use Madrid Middle School? Which, by the way, isn't an industrial area that, that shouldn't have been built there in the first part? And please don't interrupt from the audience. They're, they're just going to say, sure, move your program here. We have no use for it. You know, you think they're going to tell us, oh, Voorhees, absolutely, come on over? We have no use for it. We literally have a property that belongs to us that should be utilized by us, that should be expanded and modernized by us for the use of our students. Now, during this, these discussions, community members have made the assertion that, well, because you're kicking out PCC, you are anti-higher education. And it's in your school motto, "Community committed to college and career." College. Well, what about the career portion? Our adult transition students are located in a facility close to our adult school where they can receive work skills and job trainings after our legal obligation through FAPE ends when they turn 22. By moving this program to the Rosemead campus, we would expand our adult transition program into a modern facility that meets all of the legal requirements while connecting those students with our Almani Rosemead Adult School so that they can continue to receive career training. This discussion tonight, led by our trustees, by Mr. Padilla and Mrs. Torres de Seigres, this is not the way to work as a school district. This is an edict shouted from the mountaintop. This is top-down micromanaging. All of us here, with maybe the exception of Mr. Salcedo, we are not subject matter experts in special ed. And despite Mr. Padilla's assertions that he's been in education for 30 years, he is not a credential teacher at the elementary school level. He does, he is not a special ed teacher in any way, shape or form. Mr. Nguyen has no experience in special ed. Mrs. Torres de Seigres has no experience in special ed. I certainly don't have any experience in special ed. But you know who does? Our staff. So when we have a feasibility study completed, and as part of that study, our staff is interviewed and asked, what are your needs? How do we best serve our students? What's going to be the best way to serve those students in the future? Should I be listening to people who have no experience in that subject area? Or should I be listening to the people who literally built their careers on serving special needs individuals? I refuse to participate in this farce again. I refuse to waste any more money, more than the 1.1 that has already been wasted and potentially more because of these contracts being canceled. I will not entertain any notions to go rent property from somebody else when we have perfectly usable property that we own, that we should be using today. Mrs. Redia made a comment earlier today regarding the responsibilities of the Bond Oversight Committee. I want to reiterate what she said. Under Education Code Section 1527- Under Education Code Section 1527A-B, the Oversight Committee must promptly alert the public to any waste or improper expenditure of bond revenue. She stated at the end of her statement, Education Code Section 15264 states that bond oversight is supposed to be an active probing process and members of the Oversight Committees must promptly alert the public to any waste or improper expenditure of school construction bond money and said unauthorized expenditures or waste of school bond revenues are to be vigorously investigated and the courts are to act swiftly to restrain any improper expenditures or waste. While we've been sitting up here, I've been looking up in these ed codes that she provided, guess what? She's right. It's the duty of an independent bond oversight committee to come and tell us, not only as trustees, but as community members, as taxpayers, when there's waste taking place. We've literally wasted a million dollars by the actions that this board has taken. That is not an appropriate use of our money, taxpayer money. Her final paragraph here says, "The bond oversight committee is an independent body who is accountable to the taxpayers of the Almani Union High School District. The committee will be submitting a request to the district to appoint an independent legal counsel for the citizens' bond oversight committee to investigate and, if necessary, seek an injunction to prevent the waste of taxpayer dollars by the Board of Trustees." So I did a quick Google search while we're up here. And there was an item that I found from... It's from the California Association of Bond Oversight Committees. And one of the items that it states is that bond oversight committees should have their own independent legal counsel. That is not the same legal counsel that the Board of Trustees has. Because the legal counsel that we hire represents our interests. So I am in complete agreement that the district provide independent legal counsel to the bond oversight committee to investigate these allegations of waste and, if necessary, litigate and seek an injunction to prevent additional waste or even the waste that's already taking place from continuing forward. Lastly, I want to point out another thing. The last board meeting, as was discussed, Mrs. Torres de Seigrest works for Pasadena City College. Many of community members, including myself, felt that she has a conflict of interest and could not be impartial because she receives a paycheck from them. Mrs. Torres de Seigrest made statements, said, well, I don't make that much anyway, so it shouldn't matter. I wanted to say two things before I get to my other point. One, it's not about the dollar, it's about the principle. And the reason why that's important is because in previous instances, when a board member did something inappropriate involving school district funds, that school board member made a similar statement. It was only a little bit of money. The board that was in place here made it clear then, not about the dollar amount, it's about the principle. And that board member was censured for their misuse of district funds. Mrs. Torres de Seigrest has a conflict. The information she presented about some of the sites, including the Jeff Seymour Center and Norwood Elementary School, who sits on the board at the Almani City School District and who probably provided her that information, none other than her husband, David Seigrest, who again spoke at the Almani City Council meeting last week and made similar statements. We don't have to continue to keep our students in a parking lot. As many of you said at the last meeting, as Mr. Padilla repeated to you so condescendingly tonight, as though he's actually listening to your concerns. We made a promise to this community when we asked them to ask a bond for $190 million. I have to say that, $190 million, last time I said $192, I was off by $2 million. $190 million. We told them we would be responsible with their money and that we would provide for our students. Students that are here tonight. Students that deserve facilities that are ADA accessible, that have proper air conditioning, have proper heat, proper open space. Because guess what? It's not just one massive parking lot at the Pasadena City College Campus or Rosemead Campus for the adult school. There is some open space there. We can expand that open space because there's more than adequate parking there that we could take away from. But these assertions that it's the wrong facility, that it's the wrong place because it's a two-story building, you know, that it's the wrong place because those classrooms are too small. Well, let me ask Mrs. Torres de Seigrest, are those classrooms too small for your students from PCC? Is it the wrong space for students at PCC because there's no green space, no open space? Is it the wrong space for PCC because there's a huge parking lot there with adequate parking? No. So how is it the wrong space for our students? When we were literally already so close to upgrading that facility, moving our students to a place that they are deserving of? And more importantly, because the comments you made, while it's only a few hundred students and PCC's serving thousands, you neglected to mention the fact that once the adult school program resumes at that campus, we will literally be serving thousands of students ourselves. Those are the students that you have been elected to represent and advocate for, not Pasadena City College, not your PCC students, not any other entity that your husband is asking you to advocate for. You were elected to represent the Almani Union High School District and its interests, including its financial interests. And you are in dereliction of your duty. And so are the other two board members who voted for this, Mr. Padilla and Mr. Nguyen. The three of you are in direct dereliction of your duties, both fiduciary and ethically to this district. You are taking the position of an outside agency over your own students. You are attempting to give direction from the top down tonight without taking the input from our staff. We have, as Mr. Salcedo alluded to earlier, we've already done a feasibility study. We were presented with multiple options. And even after we delayed it, the results are still the same. Best option, most fiscally responsible, makes most logical sense, provides for least interruption of our instructional programs, is to move to the adult school campus in Rosemead. None of this was shared back in 2020 and 2021. But suddenly, it's an issue. And as I stated last meeting, there's very strong suspicion that all of this pre-decided because conversations are taking place outside of a board meeting. Because I know for a fact that there are folks here on this dais who don't understand half of the material that's being presented tonight or gets presented by staff on a regular basis. They're just going along with what they're told to do or say, more importantly, to vote on. So before we take any action on anything to do with the adult transition program or its physical location, I want to hear from our staff. I want a presentation. I want data. Mr. Padilla said, data, data, data. That's how we should be basing our decisions on. Data is data. Where's the data from our staff indicating what their needs are? Where's the data from our staff telling us how many students we have in the adult transition program? Where's the data from our staff telling us what the projections are for the future? You talk about, oh, we want to make sure that our students are integrated into the campus. Our students are integrated into the high school campuses through the community-based instruction programs where they participate now. And once they finish their program at the high school, they're allowed to continue their instruction at ATP so that they can continue to receive work skills and job training, not only there, but through the adult school. I fear, though, that I am basically speaking into the wind. I've talked to some of you recently and I told you, come to tonight's meeting. Pay close attention to the discussion, and I said discussion in quotes, taking place tonight during this item. Pay close attention to what is said. More importantly, pay close attention to the actions that are taken, the direction that is given. Because I guarantee you, it's not in the best interest of not only your students, but yourselves as taxpayers.
Are you done, Mr. Breones? Board member Florentio Breones, are you done?
I've concluded my remarks.
Thank you very much for your comment. So first, you know, you made reference to me and you attacked me publicly, okay? You called me a George Santos, which is the congressman that is in the news. For the record, you are the proven pathetic liar. You're the one who lied about your education, that you were a graduate of Pepperdine, okay? So you're the George Santos, not me. And yes, I have a 30-year career in education. And I know you might envy that, but that's what it is. Because I did go to college and make a lot of sacrifices.
Sir, there's nothing enviable about you.
Do not interrupt me. Don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt you, so don't interrupt me. Okay? Don't try to discredit me because you are the pathetic proven liar. And we had Mr. Gabriel Ramirez and Mr. Cosmo Jimenez that came here and spoke about your little antics that you do, trying to write letters for people from the Chamber of Commerce and trying to put your name or other people's name and submitting it to the city council. That's proven, okay?
I'm sorry, proven by whom?
To say that.
Proven by whom, sir?
You got fired from Hilda Solista's office. I've been in my career for 30 years. I wasn't fired.
Do you have direct evidence of anything that you're saying? No.
Of course, you know.
It's all hearsay.
Don't interrupt, Mr. Breones. You see, you're very good. You're very good to dish it out.
The words, "I went to Pepperdine."
Yeah, you're very good at dishing it out, but when it comes your way.
And evidently, you're very good at dishing it out too, based on somebody spending the time and money.
And I didn't interrupt you, so let me finish.
I'm going to interrupt you and call you out as the liar that you are, the manipulator that you are, and the deceptive person that you are. And the fact that you've got two individuals that are in your pocket going along with this without question to the detriment of our students, because that's why I'm here, for our students.
So when I was in the minority in this board and it was a four-one, all of those decisions, Mr. Padilla just sat here, those weren't foregone conclusions, right? The way they were going to vote. But now the way we're voting, every decision that we're making, Mr. Breones is going to question it. But let's not get away from the fact that you're the pathetic liar. You're not a graduate of Pepperdine. And you know who called you out?
You're right, I'm not a graduate of Pepperdine and I have never said that I was a graduate of Pepperdine.
I'll give you, I will bring back the document that got memorialized by Gabriel Ramirez and we'll give everybody in this room a copy.
The document of a website that I don't control, that I never had knowledge of? That somebody else put up that document? Thank you, yeah.
Yes, okay? Because there were people that graduated from Pepperdine University that said, you know, we called the school and there is no Florencio Breones that ever graduated from Pepperdine University.
In fact, you can look at every posting that I've ever shared on social media. You're like the congressman that lied about his education. And never uttered those words.
Right, Mr. Breones.
On the agenda item, please, thank you.
Legal counsel, I'm going to finish what I want to say. Thank you for your advice, I'm going to finish. Okay, Ms. Christine Schuh? I'm going to finish. I'm the board president, I have the floor now.
Is this germane to the discussion? I don't believe it is. We should be sticking to the topic. Thank you. Because it's not about what you feel, it's about what the law states.
Legal counsel, thank you for your opinion. I will finish what I have to say.
Because if you don't, it's a Brown Act violation. And guess what? We get fined for those. You don't pay for them out of your own pocket. The taxpayers of Almani Union High School District pay for those fines, not you. So stick to the topic, Rick Kaitol.
Yes, Florencio. I am calling you out because, again, you are the pathetic liar. So put that on the record and I will move on, okay? I know that when you attacked me personally and you attacked Professor Torres de Seigrest, you're very good. I don't interrupt. I let you go on for like 40 minutes. But, you know, I try to take five minutes to remind the public who the liar is. And you guys can all come back and we will pass out that document. I will bring it at the next meeting so you can see for yourself when he claimed he was a graduate of Pepperdine University. Right. Right. That anyone can alter, but he put it in there because when you log into a... When you log into...
Again, Mr. Padilla, if you could stick to the topic and not waste our time.
No, you've wasted enough of our time. Let's go then, let's go for the facts. Legal counsel, I have a question for you. Does Mrs. Torres de Seigrest have a conflict of interest with the PCC contract that we undid? Answer that question for me or read out a letter if she has a conflict of interest so we can shut Mr. Breones up.
The PCC contract is not on the agenda. We are not going to talk about board member Torres de Seigrest's potential conflict of interest. So that is not on the agenda, I would like for us to stick...
You said that legal counsel was going to conduct whether there was a conflict of interest with board member Professor Torres de Seigrest.
This is supposed to be a discussion about the adult transition center.
Out of line, I have the floor, be quiet. Be quiet, I have the floor right now.
You will not shut me up when you're breaking the law. Stick to the agenda item.
I will finish.
Stick to the agenda item and don't break the law.
I will finish, board member Breones.
Stick to the agenda item.
I will answer your question. When can we bring that up to get your findings on the conflict of interest?
When there is a lease agreement on the agenda for discussion, Torres de Seigrest can make a statement about whether there's a conflict of interest or not. She and I are working together to research that.
Yes, but I'm going to have you read it out because you're our legal counsel. So I will have you read it out. You're the one that conducted the investigation of whether there's a conflict of interest here. I will direct you to read it. And if I need to get enough votes on this dais to have you read it, you will read it.
Again, if we could stick to the item on the agenda, sir.
You will read it, Christine Schuh, because I want that question answered. Because it's been thrown around that there's a conflict of interest here. And I want the answer to the question so that the public can answer, what?
There's no investigation. And I am working with Ms. Torres de Seigrest and her counsel to determine if there is a conflict of interest or not.
Okay, so then we will get that answer. Thank you, legal counsel. I will move on and at this time, I would like to make a motion, okay? Here's my motion. At this time, I would like to make a motion to direct Dr. Edward Zuniga, superintendent of the Almani Union High School District, to immediately begin the process to integrate our adult transition program students back into general education campuses in line with IDEA or the Individuals with Disability Education Act. When you heard me speak, I talked about the two tenants. In order to fulfill its two tenants, number one, to provide FAP, a free and appropriate public education, and two, to provide an education in the least restrictive environment. That is the motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Professor Torres de Seigrest. Is there any discussion?
Discussion, question for legal. This item is listed on the agenda as discussion, not action. Is this an actionable item tonight? Or just it really gets to the question, is this an appropriate motion to make at this time?
Well, it says discussion and direction on the Adult Transition Center. Doesn't provide more information than that. All of these students have IEPs, so there really should be a staff discussion and recommendation for the board.
Thank you. And follow up to that, and again, I want to reiterate something I shared. This discussion is a farce. But more importantly, any discussion involving operational matters at our schools involving any of our programs should be led by staff. We should not be dictating day-to-day operations of our programs. This is probably the most inappropriate acting board majority that I've seen in a long time. And let me tell you, I've seen some bad boards. To give direction to reintegrate students into the high schools without getting any input from staff, from seeking their advice as to what their needs are, is not only inappropriate, but so, so dangerous. And this is, and please don't interrupt, this is the absolute wrong thing to be doing. Because as I stated, you, 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 myself, and maybe Mr. Salcedo, although you are a high school principal, we are not subject matter experts in special education. And despite, as you shared, your 30 years of experience in education, and I want to clarify, education, not academia, those are two different things. And I wish you knew the difference. You are not a subject matter expert in special education. For you to be dictating to our employees how they should be running their programs is absolutely ludicrous. Ludicrous. And we should not be taking this action tonight. And I want to remind you that there are still community members who have been waiting this out tonight who are already upset based on the actions that you've taken to cancel contracts. who are already upset based on the actions that you've taken to cancel contracts with DLR for the adult school property. Do you think this is gonna make them go away because you're trying to send their kids to a high school campus? Do you think they're gonna forget for one second? No. They're not. And I guarantee you right now, if you think this is gonna be your legacy, you are sorely mistaken. And I want both Mr. Nguyen and Mrs. Torres de Segrist, before you vote on this item, to think very carefully what it means to serve as a trustee here at the El Monte Union High School District. Your job is to be responsible for the students in your care today and to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and the residents who put you in these seats. You're shaking your head over there, I don't think you understand the gravity of this discussion, Mrs. Torres de Segrist, and I really wish you did. And Mr. Nguyen, I know you've been silenced most of this time, but this looks like it's weighing very heavily on you, and I hope that it is, because I hope that you believe and you understand the words that I'm sharing with you. I hope that you understand that the actions that you take have a profound impact on our students. And I hope that you understand that any information that has been given to you and shared to you, with you, by other board members outside of this meeting is either false, misleading, or incomplete. And that this discussion is being led by a petty and vindictive individual who is seeking redress on grievances he feels he has faced over the years, not because he thinks he's doing what's best for our students. I hope that you all consider this statement very seriously and understand the implications of what you might be about to do.
I have something to say. First of all, it's insulting, me, that you told me that I have, you have me in his pocket. I'm a grown man. I'm an educated man.
Then act like it.
You don't have to tell me, Mr. Breones, okay? I'm older than you, I'm more educated than you, I have more experience than you in life, okay? So, don't insult me, just be quiet, let me have a floor. You may raise your hand, please. You think you run the board, but you're not. This is democracy at work.
Don't interrupt, please don't interrupt. You've been interrupting the whole time, if you're gonna interrupt, you need to leave.
I let you talk, 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 but this is last.
This is the Board of Education meeting in public. It is not your meeting, I will repeat that. This is the Board of Education's meeting in public. If you're going to interrupt, you need to leave. You need to leave if you're going to interrupt.
And first of all, I need your advice, I know what I have to do, okay? I watched on YouTube the past war and what going on. I know there's a blood, I mean, bad blood between you guys, but I'm here to, you know, to take into consideration, to serve the area that I represent. I know that Adult Transition Center is, you know, needed immediate attention. Even in classroom seven, you know, at the ATC right now, I know the floor is wobbling, they need immediate attention. And you guys, the disabled student deserve better. And we try to come up with a solution so we can have a cake and eat it too. Serve the community I represent and also serve the disabled student. That's all I can say. Don't insult me, okay? That's it.
Thank you, Board Member Queen Nguyen. So again, I'm gonna call for the vote and I'm gonna repeat the, my motion on the floor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to direct Dr. Edward Zuniga, Superintendent of the El Monte Union High School District, to immediately begin the process to integrate our adult transition program students back to general education campuses in line with IDEA, Individuals with Disability Education Act, in order to fulfill its two core tenants. Number one, to provide FAP, a free and appropriate public education. And number two, to provide an education in the LRE or the least restrictive environment. That was the motion. I have a second by Professor Torres de Segrist. I will now call for the vote. Okay, so we have a subsequent motion from Board Member Carlos Salcedo to have a feasibility study done. Do we have a second to Carlos Salcedo, Board Member Carlos Salcedo's motion?
Second.
You have a second, okay?
I really like.
You have a second to that?
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll call for the vote, all right? Mr. Salcedo. Mr. Breones.
Aye.
Mr. Queen Nguyen. I'm a no. Professor Torres de Segrist.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it passes, and we will have a feasibility study then, okay? All right, we're gonna go ahead and move right along. The next item on the agenda is number two. Consider approval to award bid number 2022-23B6, South El Monte High School Modernization Rebid Project to RBH Constructors, Inc.
I move to approve.
We have a motion, we have a motion, move to approve by Board Member Carlos Salcedo. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Florencio Breones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, number three, consider approval to enter into an agreement with Sandy Pringle's Associates to provide DSA Inspector of Record Services for the South El Monte High School Modernization Project.
Move to approve.
We got a, we got a motion by Board Member Breones. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Queen Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, consider approval to enter into an agreement with FENA Engineering and Testing to provide material testing and special inspection services for South El Monte High School Modernization Project.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Professor Torres de Segrist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five on the regular agenda. Consider approval to utilize CMAS contracts number 3-21-061021 and 3-23-01-1033 with Easy Networks Cabling, Inc. to replace district classroom projector systems as needed. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Seconded by Board Member Carlos Salcedo. Discussion, you have the floor, Board Member Salcedo.
So, I was leading over here and talking too well, because I had a question about it. First of all, I'm glad it's getting done, because it seems like technology is changing so fast, so I'm glad that we're using these funds, because we know how much technology's been used in the classroom and how much it aids learning. But... I just wanted to make sure, and he verified for me, the proposal that's on there is for a per project for one. It's not for the entire project, right? Because I know that in the, in the, in the summary, we're talking about over 200 classrooms. So, do we have a sense as to how many? I mean, over 200 could be 300, 400, 500?
I don't know exactly the number of projectors that we have served in this year, but the proposal that you're talking about is for one projector, the cost of one projector.
But we, again, I don't want to hold it up, because I know how important that is. But if we can get that number later on, you know, a ballpark.
Sure, we can do that on Friday morning.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we had a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Item number six, F6. Consider approval to award bid number 2022-2023P1E-Rate Funding for year 2023-2024 for Category 2 Services to Development Group, Inc.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Do I have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr., by Board Member Queen Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between El Monte Union High School District and El Monte Rosemead Adult School and OTEN, the Outreach and Technical Assistance Network for Canvas Access. Can I get a motion to approve?
I will approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Florencio Breones. Seconded by Board Member Mr. Carlos Salcedo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, consider approval of memorandum of understanding or MOU between El Monte Union High School District and the West San Gabriel Valley Selpa to establish a teacher residency program. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move by Board Member Mr. Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Carlos Salcedo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number nine, consider approval of agreement between the El Monte Union High School District and Loma Linda University to provide learning opportunities for university students. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Board Member Professor Torres de Segrist. Seconded by Board Member Carlos Salcedo.
Discussion.
Discussion. You have the floor, Mr. Breones.
Just a comment to staff. When, when you bring agreements from other universities, from universities for us to approve, we just ensure that the universities that we're gonna be partnering with don't have active Title IX waivers. That's always been a concern of mine. I want to ensure that the universities that, or institutions that we're partnering with are respectful of women and non-binary individuals, LGBT folks, things along those lines. So, just my two cents on that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item number 10, consider approval of memorandum of understanding between the El Monte Union High School District and universities for field practicum opportunities. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion by Board Member Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
I second.
Seconded by Board Member Mr. Queen Nguyen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 11, consider approval of Resolution Number 25-22-23 in recognition of Black History Month. Can I get a motion to approve? I got a motion, it's moved by Board Member Florencio Breones. Seconded by Board Member Mr. Carlos Salcedo.
I have discussion.
Discussion. You have the floor, Professor Torres de Segrist.
Dr. Zuniga, yes, I, we approve this one, but when we have the month for the Italians or the month for the Irish people, because this is, this country is formed by a lot of people, and they, we don't want to discriminate the others, others, another races. Are we going to make another, a recognition for the Italian or the Irish people?
We'll be glad to do that. I mean, that's something that I believe you and I had a discussion on. I don't know, to be honest with you, when that falls, so I would need to do the research if the board is interested in doing that, to bring that also forth as a resolution. In my opinion, I think we try to embrace all cultures as much as we can, and this is just another token of what our district is made of, is just embracing our neighbors and our community and our society.
Okay, thank you. Yes, okay.
Okay, anybody else have any further discussion on this? Okay, so we have, it's been moved, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 12, discuss, review, and revise administrative regulations 6158. Independent study, first reading 02.01.2023. Dr. Zuniga?
This is the first reading for the updates on administrative regulations for the independent study. It allows us to ensure that we're aligned with education code for any type of independent study revision or law that recently passed, and that's just our update that we need to have.
So, quick question, so was this a recommended updated by ESBA?
Usually is, because we work with GAMET. Any type of ed code that changes, especially for a high school district with independent study, we have multiple variations of independent study, including online personal learning. We have students that are off 100% on online independent study. We have some kids that do it periodically, so this would ensure that all kids are covered under the independent study law.
So, is this a new admin regulation, or are we just updating our existing?
We actually have been updating as we get updates. So, if you, if you noticed the last couple of times, when COVID hit, the independent study topic became a debate at the state level, and we have to align our onboard policies in case there's questions with graduation requirements, et cetera, et cetera, on that, so.
So, this one's a brand new one?
Yep.
Thank you.
We don't need to approve this.
No action taken, just first reading.
Okay, anybody else have any other comments on item 12? Board Member Florencio Breones?
No questions.
Mr. Queen Nguyen?
No, no question.
Professor Torres de Segrist?
No.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move. Thank you, Dr. Zuniga, appreciate that. Move on to number 13. Consider approval of ratification to the El Monte Union Educators Association, EMUEA, unit agreement with the El Monte Union High School District for school year 2023 through 2024, school year. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
I second.
Board Member Florencio Breones. Seconded by Board Member Queen Nguyen. Any discussion?
Thank you, staff. Thank you for getting it done.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. So, we're gonna move on to item G of tonight's board meeting. This is roundtable, and then the closure of the meeting for today, February 1st, Wednesday. I'll start off with Mr. Carlos Salcedo.
Just out of curiosity, was there any preferential voting today? Did we miss something? Any preferential voting?
No, Ruben had no preferential voting this evening.
I'll just check, I just thought it was odd that, all right.
Yeah, thank you, because if not, I would have missed you again.
No, I don't have anything, it's just, you know, Friday, I hope to see everybody there.
Thank you, Board Member Carlos Salcedo. Mr. Board Member Florencio Breones?
Just one item, well, actually, yeah, thank you, Mr. Salcedo. Looking forward to seeing everybody on Friday for the Lunar New Year celebration. The only item that I have is, I'd like to see consensus. Seeing that the information that I received and that I provided during written communication makes some very serious allegations and provides a lot of proof that Trustee Padilla may not in fact actually live in the district. There's an easy way to solve this. Mr. Padilla would need to provide proof that he does indeed live in the district and meets the requirements to, one, run for office, get elected, and two, maintain the requirements to continue to serve. There's a, an action that a individual or a government body can take through the Attorney General's Office to seek permission to require an individual to prove their legal authority to hold a seat. Legal counsel, correct me if I'm pronouncing it wrong, I believe it's Quo Waranto, Waranto? My Latin's a little rusty, so. So, considering that the information that was provided to me and that I've shared with you makes very serious allegations and that our community should have their answers about this, I'm asking for consensus to direct legal staff to file the application or the writ with the Attorney General's Office to begin the process to investigate these very serious allegations.
I, I don't know offhand, I haven't dealt with this particular situation before. It sounds like Mr. Breones may have more information than I do right now, but I can look into it.
So, let me, let me amend that request. I guess, would we, could we get consensus to direct staff or legal to look into that process, report back, and then make a decision at a future date as to whether or not we want to move forward?
Well, we will ask that question, and you, you've given us all this, and you've read all those things that you said about me, which are all lies. Now I know where all those text messages came during my campaign. If you had that document, that means that you made all those allegations.
The question is to get consensus to.
Okay, do you want consensus? Carlos, do you want consensus? Okay. Mrs. Torres de Segrist, are you okay? I'm a definitely no. I'm not gonna use any of our district money. If you guys are crying about all the money that we're wasting, this is ridiculous, okay? This is just Mr. Breones not being able to handle that. You know, he no longer has a majority on this board, and he doesn't know how to live with that. But, do you want to do that, Professor Torres de Segrist?
No, I don't want to spend any more money.
No, Mr. Queen Nguyen?
100% no.
Okay, so that.
Let the law take its course.
Yeah, that answers the question, you have no direction. Do you have anything else, Board Member Breones? Member Breones?
Nope, that's it for tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breones. You got your answer. Uh, Mr. Queen Nguyen, do you have anything to share tonight?
Uh, I would like to ask Mr. Cecil what the SHIELD UP at, uh, a Royal High School survey is, and what is Youth Truth, uh, district-wide program is. Could you explain to me, please?
Um, Dr. Zuniga, talk more about Youth Truth. They work with the, the Student Council to do that, but it gives students opportunity for their voices to be heard. The SHIELD UP program is a altern-, it's a, a program at Royal High School where they give extra psych year, homeroom, they go into, you know, certain, they break out wherever the kids' needs are, they meet with them. I think it's a 20-minute period, um, to give them that extra support during the day. It's an intervention period during the day that they're in. And I can give you more information. They have very, a lot of details. I can do it in a board memo for you too, or they can do a presentation, either way. It's a very, it's a really great program, what they established years ago.
And what is Youth Truth?
Uh, you wanna talk about that, Dr. Zuniga?
Sure. Youth Truth is a nonprofit organization that works with high schools across the nation to enhance student voice through surveys. The surveys focus on specific topics. For example, uh, school safety, culture, connected it to, uh, teachers. So the kids complete a survey that is relevant to other high schools, that we can compare their responses to our kids, how they're feeling on campus. Uh, to be clear, uh, how they're engaged, how do they feel about engagement, culture, relationships, academic challenge, college and career readiness, belonging and peer collaboration, emotional, mental health, and diversity, equity, inclusion. So the questions that are developed are research-based, and then they're compared between, um, common high schools like ours, like live in suburban areas, or they could do it nationwide or in California, uh, and it allows us a kind of a gauge about how we're doing as a school district and servicing our students through the voice of kids. Uh, and that's something that is, um, done precisely because they actually, uh, provide the data for us. It, it's, I don't do it myself. Uh, they actually come third party who has no interest in the district, just make sure that the students have a clear voice and that the public understands what students are feeling in those classrooms and on campus as well. Uh, our student, uh, president, I mean, our student, Sec, Student Advisory President and also our student board member has also participated. I'm not sure if you're wanting, have any comments with that, Youth Truth?
Yeah, so when we get the results in from the students, we make it, um, initiative to really look at the results from each respective high school, and, you know, one thing that we really focus on, and focusing on the areas that we not necessarily excel in and where we can improve. Um, at the top of my head, I don't know if I can remember correctly, but I think a lot of them were focused in the area of relationships, right, among teacher and staff. So we look at that data and become even present to the board. Each high school has their own, um, it's one presentation, right, but each high school does a report, and we're able to give you guys updates on, you know, what we need to focus on. And mainly the, the most important takeaway is that at the end of the day, these are our student input, right? So these are our students who answer these surveys, and at the end, they also have a, an open-ended section where they can put their thoughts, um, whether it be more specific or more broad detail to their school. It just gives them that space to express their opinions about how, about their, about their education, about their social environment.
Mr. Nguyen, the data is also shared with staff, so we have had students present at faculty meetings to say, here's how we're feeling as students, and how are you going to address these concerns from students. But they also acknowledge the good things that are happening too. So that information is filtered through the faculty, through the WAS accreditation, the accreditation process about, these are the areas of growth that we need to work on. For example, relationship between, uh, teacher and student, uh, in most of the schools, that's one of the, uh, low percentages that we get, and we need to understand how we can better build those relationships between students and teachers in the classroom. So, we feel that that results in a positive learning environment, enrichment, and also can lead to academic success when you have a relationship with those kids in the classroom too. It's not an easy task, because every teacher has a different method, right, of teaching style, and allowing our teachers to grow, but also support our students and making sure when they walk into that classroom, it's not the teacher's classroom, it's our classroom as students and teachers too. And it's really kind of an example of what we try to bring dialogue to not only students, but also to our staff as well, through the voices of students. So it, it's something that, um, one of our student board members, uh, brought back from CSBA, uh, at the annual conference, and the board was interested in learning more about Youth Truth, and, um, we, we actually brought it back for discussion, and this is probably what our fifth year that we've had Youth Truth, and the data doesn't go anywhere. The data is complete, sir. I'm gonna, uh, send it to you in your Friday memo, the last presentation that was made for the student summary that was given to the board, and we use it also in our board retreat too.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga.
And I'll provide, I'm sorry, I'll provide you with the structure of our SHIELD UP program and how they use as a system of support at a Royal High School, how that's, how that's structured over there. I can do that for you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cecil.
Great, thank you, Board Member, uh, Mr. Queen Nguyen. Um, Professor Torres de Seigres.
Yes, um, Dr. Zuniga, is it possible to bring to our board and remind us, remind us, I don't know if we have a policy where we have to respect the ideas of each one of the boards? Just a few minutes ago, Mr. Bor-, Mr. Breones misrespected me when he said, "I don't know." That is wrong. That's my opinion. It's not his opinion. What is he trying to say, to impose his will? That is really not acceptable. Not acceptable. He doesn't know me for saying that, that I don't know what, what the, what is, what is the responsibility of the board members. Who is he for telling me that? Please, I really would like to read the policy. I don't have, remember that the other day I told you that I was very happy when you sent us all the.
Yeah, I could send him again.
Unfortunately, I can't remember right now. I'm.
No, I, I, you're talking about the board bylaws.
Yes.
Which are in our 9,000 series of board policies.
Unfortunately, I'm two times right now, and I don't remember which is, but this is wrong what he did, okay?
I, I personally feel that a study session would benefit this board to review our bylaws and have that dialogue about specific things that the role of each board member has, the role of the body of the board, and the role of superintendent, uh, to better support our process during board meetings. Um, we are, you know, with the exception of Mr. Nguyen, we have been part of this board, uh, for years, and we have refreshers for a reason. We have a study session for a reason. Um, not only this district, but every district is almost a, a, a necessity for us, so I invite the board to, uh, engage. I'll have a conversation with the board president to see if there's something that would maybe of interest to the board in a future study session that we could bring. We've had budget study session, we've had bylaw study sessions, we've had legal counsel presenting, we had a third-party presenters that don't know anybody. They just, hey, here's how effective board members, you know, run according to their board policies and their board bylaws. Um, so, that's my recommendation. I'm gonna go ahead and send, uh, over on Friday memo again, the board bylaws by links. If you want hard copies, I can provide you a handbook as well.
I, I would like to have a hard copy.
So, we'll go ahead and print out in binders and put all the board bylaws there too, because it's easier to access at home as well. So we're happy to do that too.
Yes, because we are here for respecting each other. Each other, we have to respect our ideas. Eh, it doesn't matter, but it's my own idea. If he has his own idea, respect him. Now let him do it.
I wanted to, to share, I, I am in complete agreement with you, that I think we should have a study session, um, to go over our bylaws, uh, so that everyone understands what our role and our responsibility is as a trustee. Yeah, I agree.
Dr. Zuniga, I love it when you send it. You remember, I told you that I really liked that, but I really would like to have a hard copy that we have with us all the time. And Mr. President, probably he needs to have it and remember, everybody has to respect each other. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Can I have some, say something?
Yes.
The problem is, there are a lot of accusation, but there's no proof. It's just speculation. And you should not pass those kind of gossip. You don't know the facts or don't, just be quiet. That's it. Don't accuse people of something that, you know, they don't do. Okay? So, you're gonna have us respect. Each of us have a vote, equal vote, even though I don't vote the way you like, but you have to respect my vote. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Queen Nguyen, and, uh, I don't have any items, so we're gonna go ahead and, uh, if I may. Trustee Ruben Carrasco, um, if you'd like to have, uh, any topics or issues brought forward to the future agenda?
Yeah, thank you. So, last meeting, I handed out the packet about the proposal about adding a possible second city member. Um, I don't know if I can make the motion, but I would like the motion to be made that, um, I have the opportunity to present this, and, you know, and it's all its content as I was, as I gave you the packet, and have a discussion and possible direction on it at the next board meeting.
Do you want it agendized?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay, to give direction to, or to vote on whether or not to expand the.
Yeah, so presentation and then, uh, direction, yeah.
I would support that.
Yeah, the way that we would, uh, look into this is, uh, board policy, uh, to be specific about how many board members would be under the board policy that we have for the student board member. Uh, the ed code does allow for multiple board members. The, the, the body of the board at the time, uh, decided to go with one, um, but if that's, that's the board that's interested in, we would bring back the board, a policy for review, discussion, and action if you would like. Okay. Whatever the board.
I'm for it, too.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to item two. It's closed session.
I have one more, just one item, Mr. Padilla.
Yep.
There was, uh, an, an honor in memoriam that the district paid tribute to, to a former employee, so I'd like to recognize that employee, uh, as we close the meeting, if I may. Um, this is the, uh, passing of Cecilia Dugan, uh, who passed away on January 19th as a retired, uh, employee of our school district. Uh, Ms. Dugan was hired to teach business at Montview High School on September 6th, 1974. Uh, she became the Coordinator of Bilingual Education at Montview on August 25th, 1977, where the program became a model project across the state. She changed roles and became a counselor on September 4th, 1983, and Ms. Dugan moved to the district office as Assistant Director of Compensatory Education on February 4th, 1987, and then the director on July 1st of the same year. In 1988, she transferred to the adult school as Assistant Principal of ESL Adult Basic Education, where she stayed until she retired on July 21st, 2003. She was a good friend and a great colleague to those that had privilege of working with her, uh, and this is in memory of, again, our former colleague Cecilia Dugan. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. Um, at this time, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, number two, there, we are not going back into closed session. We don't need to write legal counsel.
Correct.
Right. Item number three, uh, report out from closed session. Um, Christine Shu?
Thank you. Item A, the board approved a settlement agreement in the amount of $4,000 by a vote of 5-0. For items B, C, D, E, and F, no action was taken. And that concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. Um, at this time, we'll move on to G4, adjournment of the meeting. Uh, let this meeting be adjourned at, uh, 10:50 PM. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.